Welcome, planning commission.
Thank you.
It's great.
That's nothing but we call it home.
Thanks for the wonderful job that you guys have been doing, all of you. Where's the, where are the people I don't know?
They are not here yet.
So.
It's human, right? Yeah, Ron and he's, he'll be here for, I believe, one more meeting next week from today.
And he'll be here for one or two more.
Promoted.
He's, he's heading to Alabama and then Tanya Della Hose, she wasn't able to make it since she's out of town, but.
One I sort of wanted to meet since I haven't actually met her yet.
Boo openings.
Okay, she's new. Is Tony new?
It's new, yes. And she's wonderful. She's a real estate agent, has a lot, a really good sense of.
Practical on the ground.
Yeah, exactly. Which I think is really helpful.
Well, I know from experience how difficult your job is and how much. Planning Commission and community development have to do with fabric of what we do as a community. So. From all of us, I'd say thank you. It's a thankless, it is a thankless job. It is, it is difficult because you can't talk to people about stuff all the time and. And having to totally rely on the code and not your own personal opinions makes it difficult with friends and neighbors a lot of times in that. You need to stick to the code and not to your feelings often. And it makes it hard when people say, I can't believe that you approved that. Piece of crap. And why would you do that? So I, I completely commiserate with, with the position that you're put in. But it is important and, and thank you. So, so we have a bunch of things to talk about today and number one. Let's be my mom calling for some reason. No, it's a butt dial. Guaranteed, guaranteed butt dial on that.
You know what those are called now? Booty call.
Not from my mom, it's not called. Never, never. So anything you guys want to start with before we jump into the agenda?
For passing the good feelings, I just want to compliment you guys on what you've gone through and what you've done over the last fourteen, fifteen months. It has been totally remarkable on what you've been through and the decisions you've had to make since last March and. You know, I was sitting in this room mid-March last year and watching you guys make some tough decisions and. Rick, phenomenal, great leadership. And I think the town knows you guys quite the, the depth.
Okay, thank you for that. It was all Jeffrey. It was a nightmare.
But it was easier than being on the schoolboy.
You might be right there. Job nobody wants. All right, let's talk about ADUs. Mark, did you want to lead off with any intro?
Well, yeah. So we've had a number of mainly single family homes coming in the last few months. And what we will see sometimes is something that. That smells like an ADU, looks like an ADU, but doesn't actually fit the, you know, fit the definition in our code of one, which requires a kitchen. And some other things and, but I know the commission has struggled with some of these and they can expand on this, but. It just appears with an outside entrance right next to the garage and that, that it's set up to potentially be a second apartment. And you know, ADU in itself is great because that gets us a deed restriction and that's for local worth for. So I think we're pretty much. Generally really supportive of that, but in these situations, the, you know, the owner is not willing to deed restrict because they're saying, no, it's not. It's not going to be serving in that capacity. So there's concerns about it being short-term rented, maybe separately from the rest of the house, that type of thing. So. You know, Steve or one of the other commissioners may have something to add on that or Julia, but. That's kind of the issue we've been running into frequently and just kind of wanted to talk that through.
We've had several projects that involve things which are, I think all of us agree thinly veiled. Short-term rental units or lock-off units. And the definitions, you know, I think everybody made a really good faith effort to come up with. Some way to define an ADU, which we love, but the owners don't love them. These are usually big houses owned by an LLC where you can see that the idea that. You know, they will lock off one side and rent that maybe while they're here and then rent two different units at the same time. Because it's, it's a big business to do this and they're starting to, to infiltrate into the infill in town. We've had a couple of big scrape offs where all of a sudden we're looking now at up to nine thousand square feet of giant house with. An amenity room, which is like a lock-off. Sometimes we look at the plans and they won't have been really careful and we'll see a. Thing that's marked as a guest house. And oh, yeah, they changed their mind. Now it's going to be their spa. So I, I think it, you know, we, we're not opposed to, to working with that, but it is problem problematic. And it fits in with the neighborhood issues of short-term rentals, because that's where these are going. These aren't in an apartment building. They're not where other STRs are. They're going to be next to you and you, you and in a neighborhood. So that's the difficult issue.
Mark, are we allowed to pull up a example of something like that Stephen's talking about or is that frowned upon?
Well, if it had already been approved, we could probably pull it up, but I'm not sure if we have ready access to one. And if you do, Jay?
Yeah. So this one was on the May eighteenth, the May eighteenth planning commission meeting. It was on the consent calendar under the good, good Darzy. It's PL twenty twenty-one zero zero nine three. I don't know if you guys care to pull it up, but it's just, I, I remember marking this and saying, this is something that we should bring up as a poster child for. For this discussion. It's fourteen fifty-six Highlands Drive.
It's known, it's the eighteen, the eighteen. Work session?
I think that one had a lot smaller square footage.
Yeah. Yeah.
Seventy, uh, seventy-four hundred square feet total.
Yeah. But Steve, the issue then is not being able to call it an ADU, even though it looks, smells and tastes like an ADU?
That's correct.
Do you guys have code, code revisions, suggestions that might help shed light on this challenge?
We can work with the planning department on something like that. If the council has a. I urge to have us do that.
I would really like to, to try to. And one of the. Cause you guys use it all the time. So I would love your input to try to help us craft something.
We try to get them to do things like guarantee they won't run gas into this area, guarantee they won't put a two-twenty service in there. But we all know that once the hammers start hitting the nails, we don't have much control over what happens after that. And with the ability now to add the small refrigerators and microwave cooking units, there you go. You got everything.
And we're also seeing it's looking like a whole standalone unit. I mean, they have their own washer and dryers. They have their own entrance. Their own full-size kitchens, full-size refrigerators, dishwashers, and we can't point to anything in our code.
Outside stairs?
Yes, outside stairs.
Yeah. Wouldn't allow like a full stove, everything that a kitchen has. And for example, we allow wet bars because and now we say they have to be in common areas like rooms that are like three hundred square feet or more. And that's because it's a common desire of these larger homes to have like some sink in an area with a dishwasher where they can be, you know, entertaining some people. So it gets into gray areas a lot of times. It's just not as simple as.
I mean, I guess the question is, why would we allow a wet bar?
Multiple wet bars, three wet bars in a house plus a kitchen.
I mean, if that's, you know, if that's a, if you're not going to allow a second full-size kitchen, why allow any of that?
It's, we, we believe that a lot of this happens in field decisions that the plans are taken and then it's like, hey. Run a two-twenty, blank it off or, and I think that's. This is something that comes up in front of us all the time and it's so glaringly obvious that it's just.
Yeah. And I think Jay, you know, is, is part of what we've been talking about with. With this whole housing thing that we've been talking about is having more of a green sheet style. Application. That you would have to go through to get your short-term rental license as opposed to how it is now. You just come in and fill out one form. Where if somebody in, you know, Dick wants to put on a railing in the restaurant, he's got to go through a green sheet and get. Sign off by everybody, which means, you know, a fairly decent look at plans too. So that would sort of elevate your concerns that, you know, possibly somebody has to go out and have a look at it before you're allowed to short-term rent. That and, you know, and that's where we discovered that, oh, you know, during the building process, they put in two-twenty and then there's a full-size fridge and a. And, you know, what turns out to be a regular kitchen in the place, which shouldn't have it. And then we could not allow the, the license at that point. So it's got to, you know, whatever you guys come up with, it's got to, we need to have a sort of a two-step process for that compliance. And, you know, investigation of that compliance that we don't currently have, that would definitely have to be. You know, on our shoulders for what we, we would then want to push, push out.
What are the stopgaps right now if somebody were to, so, so clearly this cannot be, it should not be rented out as an STR for this ADU? Do we currently not have any stopgaps for that?
Mean to go back and see if, if it.
Well, like to.
No, we don't.
To track the STR licenses for certain addresses to say with, like with this address.
No.
So we don't have that mechanism, but we could and that's something that we're talking about, about, you know, having more resources to look at.
Yeah, but there's nothing to say that they couldn't STR the whole house.
Right.
I mean, that, that's not prohibited. It's just, you know, if they're trying to create a, a separate ADU type unit, that's the challenge.
Cause technically if they wanted to, I mean, so say this is.
But you could flag it.
Fitness room and somebody goes on Airbnb and wants to rent out a fitness room, they probably can, right?
Now you can probably, you, we could come up with a way to flag an address for moving forward to say that if it ever came in for a license and you would check. Then put notes on it, like you check the notes to make sure, is it the whole house versus have they created a lock-off now that they said would, wouldn't happen?
Right. Because they could, they could rent out the whole house. So I guess if you rent out two portions of a house, would you need two different licenses?
Only if it's considered a separate actual unit. So we have people that have come in to get. Even in like Vista Point neighborhood, they've come in to, to get a short-term rental license and they say they're only renting one bedroom, but we have no way of separate. Of controlling it. So they have to pay the license fee based on the total.
Right.
Bedroom count for the whole house.
Cause they could just rent out a bedroom too, and that would be fine. They just can't rent out the fitness studio.
Well, there's really nothing to stop them from.
But well, right, right. But that's. But as far as this conversation goes, we're trying to prevent them from creating an ADU so that they're living in part of the house and then this other portion of the house. Right? That's, that's.
Either way, either. Either they are creating their separate short-term rental beside their house. The possibility of two short-term.
Right.
The main house and the small house.
Right.
Guest house.
And we're trying to cut that down.
Seems like we're operating on a, on a system.
There you go. It's like.
It's great for me, but I, I wouldn't want the government to run that way.
In the rental process, they could offer it up as unit A sleeps eight and unit B sleeps four.
Yeah.
And there's twelve and we have a license.
Right.
Bingo.
And that would take a lot of time for somebody to go through Airbnb, which I mean, I'm not saying we shouldn't, we absolutely should. But that's more of a resource.
Yeah.
Is there any way to control around the entrance, the exterior entrance? Is there any code thoughts that you guys might have to, that? Cause I think that's kind of key, you know, for it to really work as a, I mean, I've seen developers in our neighborhood that in a house recent that. They, they advertised a lock-off unit. You know, so.
And there's certain things that, you know, like Steve could probably point, or has pointed out at look. Have like a lock-up right, you didn't write policy and then suddenly you're not able to have a rec room in a large house in Chuck Hill. We have the really big rec area where they have the bar and a patio that opens up to a hot tub. It really obviously is not intended. But then when you take an approach like some places where they have a limited size of a hot bar, it's ridiculous to have a six-foot space and.
It, it's, it's, you know, if you have a seven thousand square foot home and then you limit the wet bar to, you know, six feet of space or the mini fridge. It really isn't spec to the size of the home. And so, you know, where, where is that delineation between? Here's your walkout patio from a rec room to this is clearly designed to be another unit next to the garage away from the rest of the, the entrance. It's, it's hard to, to actually write that in the code, even though sometimes, you know, there's ones that look more obvious and there's ones that are. A gray area where they maybe just want a more private area for a suite. And that, you know, after taking, attempting to try and. Do code changes, I think we've done it twice now in the last probably fifteen months. This is kind of where we are now where, you know, I think the commission is still unhappy with where we are, but it's also, it's really difficult without. Disallowing a lot of things that are pretty common in, in large homes, you know, large, single-family homes.
Do they need remote entrances or remote exterior access? And I don't know how you define that, but. That's when the big red flags go up for me. I mean, a exterior entrance that opens onto a patio, that of course, you know, that makes all sense in the world, but. These entrances that are next to the garage and off next to that third parking space beside the garage, it's, it's like big red flag.
Yeah. I mean, I think the one that Jay brought up, that was probably right in that gray area. It's, it's defined as like a. You know, a rec room, kind of a home gym, if you will, going out into a deck and it has a stairway on the side of the house. So it's not completely around the back, but it's not also completely next to the. To the garage. It's kind of like, you know, if you're trying to write this in, that's, that's the one where it really catches in the, in the gray area. And that's probably not an unreasonable. Request if you're building a big home to have a, you know, spot to work out in. It seems larger and also, but also would work probably really well in terms of. Kind of making a band that lock off.
You met. Kelly, you know, is, is in, watched it, listening to this remotely. And I know she had a keen interest in the ADU discussion and she's. She brought up a point that might be worth considering that we, we only want, I mean, we want to encourage ADUs for long-term rentals, right? Not short-term rentals. So maybe we should not allow any type of short-term rental license unless it is for an entire unit. Right? Why do we, why would we want a short-term, any type of, even I don't even know if we should be short-term, like if, if you want. I mean, we currently license a full unit. That's all we do. We don't just license a bedroom and we wouldn't. And we shouldn't license maybe an ADU. I don't even know. Do we have ADUs that legal ADUs in the town that could be licensed as short-term rentals, old ones?
Think so, yeah.
So to play devil's advocate in that case, would we be prohibiting? If you own a house, to just rent a room out in the house?
Do you want, yeah.
But what we're saying is, you could do that. You just have to pay the full license. There are no partial licenses.
There's a fee per bedroom.
Pay the full fee.
For a five-bedroom house and they're only renting out one bedroom, they're going to pay a fee on all five bedrooms.
We go down the road of a program fee.
That's what I meant.
Workless housing programming fee, then that might help slow it down. But I still think we, if we can.
Cause what Karen, if you think about it, what you prefer to do is have them rent that bedroom out to a long-term renter.
Oh, yeah. I'm not, I'm just, just devil, devil's advocating it. You know, like, how, I wonder how many, and I, yeah, I'm just thinking this through. How many? people locally, and maybe we, we have this answer from one of those surveys of like, a long-term resident who is helping to pay their mortgage by renting out a room. Which I'm not saying I'm falling on it. I'm just curious, I wonder how many people do that.
I know a few people.
Oh, yeah.
They used to rent them, but a long time.
Yeah, that's a good thing. You're right. I would much rather it be long-term.
One of the things that I think people could think about is whether you would incentivize an ADU to a builder of a giant house,
Yeah.
and sell this ADU as sort of a, a caretaker residence, where they might be happy to have somebody there. They're not there all the time. They could even manage their, the rest of the house being a short-term rental. You know, I always think about, I hate to give points to people because they cover up sins, but, you know, if you give somebody who needs two points because they got a long driveway, the chance to get them by turning their workout room with a private staircase by the third garage into an ADU, it might get us a unit and it might solve the problem.
The problem becomes that compliance and enforcement issue is really, that's, I think, where we get hung up then on this whole ADU discussion. Owner may agree that the caretainer unit's a great idea, but then you get to the next owner who says, I don't want this guy living here. I want, we can make a lot of money renting this thing out. How do we, what, what's the mechanism that we need to, to create to make sure that that doesn't happen? And it's, it's sort of also goes with concern I've had about ADUs before this, this recent problem that we're having, and that is, people that have gotten either points or something from the town or extra density from the town for an ADU that then it was deed, a deed-restricted room that wasn't then used by anybody but their child when they came up to visit. So, they got something for it, and I can think of a couple of homes in the historic district where we allowed this and we had no mechanism to say, you know, it's deed-restricted, but when you come up with your kids, that doesn't mean they're not sleeping there. So, you know, we have, we have an enforcement compliance problem, I think, with all of this stuff. So as you're crafting some new language, you know, try to think through that piece also.
But it might also prevent that short-term rental. You know, I mean, I hear you, Eric, and you're absolutely right. The enforcement is certainly a challenge and hopefully we'll get there year, you know, with time as we build our staff around that. But, uh, it still might, to Steve's point, you know, giving a couple of positive points might get us another deed-restricted unit that, you know, when we do catch up on enforcement, it's there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, it's, uh, you know, I, they're doing it anyway now. And, um, in that way, we can also flag that unit. So when their SDR license comes in, then, you know, we inspect it.
And we need that enforcement for a host of reasons, right?
Yeah, it's kind of a trust but verify. I think Reagan said that. Republican. But, uh, but, but, but also I, I, I kind of, uh, make Steve's idea, you know, a couple of points, maybe seduce someone into, into doing something like that, that's for the greater good.
Eric's got a great point. I mean, it might not work this year, but it, it gets the mechanism in place for future.
And we know we need a housing, we need a, to kind of beef up our housing staff. And if that ever happens, perhaps this would be a, a way to, to keep them busy.
I have a question for you guys. How, how do you feel about, um, doing some kind of period of time for, I don't know if forgiveness is the right word, but to, to try to incent some of the illegals that we know are out there to come in, take the deed restriction, become legit. Maybe we waive some of the non-life safety code violations in the process as incentives. I mean, I think we would need to keep life safety code violations. They've got to fix them. But some of the others, I, any thoughts on that? How we could try to get some of these people to, you know, give them a six-month period where come on in, we'll work with them, try to get these deed-restricted and legitimized that we know are out there. And they, and many of them are renting to long-termers now.
Illegal ADUs.
Illegally, yes. Any thoughts around that? Is, is that the place you think we should go or no, or?
Um, Dick, we did have, the town did in the past. It was probably twenty years ago. Do something, have a program like that where if you had a, a legal ADU, you could come in, get it, um, formalized, and we would waive all the water fees for it because that an ADU requires extra water fees beyond your single-family house would. I think it's like point six. Like if a single-family was one PIF, then the ADU is going to be an extra point six. So it's, it's fairly significant amount of money, especially since the PIFs have risen, and we could always try to reach out and do that again for any new owners of those units that didn't come in the first time, too.
I don't know if this would come in front of you.
Graham, where you're buying a condo and turning it around and selling it off. I mean, the town's going to invest a little part of something that's already built. They'll have to build it to make it work for a different purpose.
In perpetuity, because we've got a deed restriction in perpetuity. That's the appealing part for me. And again, when we catch up on enforcement, it's there to be enforced.
Franchising the people that are doing it legally and doing, and going through the process and paying the dues. I feel like the, the people that have been doing it and getting away with it are going to continue to do it and get away with it until they're called out. I don't think they're going to voluntarily walk up to the steps.
I, I think some will, some won't. I think some of the older homes that have them and really are leasing to, to, uh, workforce housing, long-term rentals, and, and I think they might come in. I think you're absolutely right with these newer ones that are, you know, that we're talking about previously. But, you know, we're gonna have to tackle them another way, but I think there's a number of older ones out there that are, that are there. I've been told by some people, you know, if you would do this, you know.
Kind of forgiveness or incentivizing people to come in legally, it is with the hope that our enforcement will catch up paired with that. Um, but I remember in one of our focus groups, one of the members talked about just what a pain it was to get a legal ADU. Is there anything else you see within our code that we could streamline? I know the big obstacle sounds like it's typically these owners do not want to have a deed restriction on any part of their house, but is there anything else in the code to make it easier, you guys think?
Yeah, we could certainly waive fees. We could consider a lower application, you know, uh, classification, like you said.
Sanitation district would probably still want to collect their fees.
Maybe we pay those through our housing helps book.
Yeah.
I mean, we've got some funds and hopefully we'll be generating more to try to get these incentives to get people to the table.
Definitely worth exploring and thinking through. Do you think these guys that are building like a trophy home, you know, six-thousand-foot home really care about?
That's not who he's talking about.
I don't think those are the ones that'll come in. I think it's the Silverchakor, well, they're in the county, but I mean, it's, it's more the older inventory in that.
They don't have to admit to doing anything illegal, right? They could just say, hey, I'd like to convert to long-term.
Yeah, I want to take advantage of this.
Right? Like, we don't have to say like, make your illegal.
They don't have to incriminate themselves, do they?
Hey, why don't you convert to an ADU, right? Like that's.
I'd definitely like to put them in the room with Chief Ed.
Shake them down.
I mean, the next topic plays into that, and that's, you know, that's the issue of the Wellington neighborhood, and we know that we have people there that want to add units above a garage. And while they're not, technically, some of them are officially ADUs because they don't have a full kitchen, they don't have enough space for that. They still are a housing-type unit that we're seeing. And, uh, but there's other issues we have to work through. I think it's the right way to do it. And we have a couple of people that are ready to do it tomorrow. And each of them have different circumstances right now, you know.
Before we, before we jump to that, okay, I just wanted to bring up one other thing in this ADU short-term rental concern, and that was the home size restriction policy that we worked on a long time ago. And what it was for was for areas that did not have, um, envelopes on plotted, a plotted envelope. So, you know, the Highlands would be exempt, but the Weishorn, where we're now seeing some massive homes being built, was actually the poster child at the time. And a couple of the, the builders that were doing stuff in the Weishorn really came out against it and we didn't really have the, the firefighter at the time to push any more than what we got. Is it time to revisit that and look at some of these more traditional neighborhoods where the whole scrape off, and I know that that's coming up also, but for me, this is more in lines with this whole short-term rental because that's what, these things are just becoming hotels in these areas, and since they only have three-foot side setback, five-foot, you know, rear setback, you can build a humongous house in an area that has unlimited SFE. So, you know, that, that's something that I'd like you guys to have a look at and see if that's worth taking another run at that, um, home size restriction and get closer to what sort of our original thought was on that.
And Eric, that home on the corner of Gold Lake and Wellington is perfect example. I mean, they scraped that lot.
That thing is not small.
Just a little row of trees around the exterior of that lot. And that's a madness. Steel they're putting in that thing is. But, and I'll take it one step further. Eric and I have been talking about this and I am totally supportive of exploring this. And the thought that I had was, what if we pick the number, let's call it six thousand square feet or five thousand, and we said, for every fifteen hundred square feet that you want to build larger than that size, you need to provide a deed-restricted housing unit. It could either be an ADU on site or it could be something that you bought off-site and converted. And, uh, you could resell it if you want. What do you got? Think of that.
Money's really no object to these people who are building these, and Jeffrey said six thousand dollars, six thousand square foot trophy. Now, these are nine, ten thousand.
That one on Gold Lake is pushing nine. It's eighty-eight or something. So, but I, you know, cause that's what we're trying to create is workforce housing. And those larger homes so frequently become mid-sized hotels in neighborhoods, and, and they take a lot of employees to run.
Yeah.
So I know we have the impact fees that, that contribute to our workforce housing on the smaller homes, but when they get up over those five thousand, six thousand square foot size, they're generating a lot more impact, in my opinion.
And they're businesses, and currently we ask that of our businesses, right? So, I, I think that makes sense.
I don't know what you guys think of that, if we went down that road as a code.
I think it makes sense.
I think it's probably above our pay grade as far as, um, that actual policy and, but, um, I think the fact that these are businesses going into neighborhoods and the whole idea that, you know, property rights and it's my property, so I can do whatever I want, is, is complete bullshit. And the fact that you can't put, you know, you can't put a restaurant up there in the Highlands, you know, there, there are limitations to these, to these lots, and I think that, um, you know, running a, a hotel, A, it gives you unfair advantage over the other, uh, operations and other businesses paying those, those fees, and B, you're, you're in a place where, you know, people are going for, for home. Yeah. We'd be supportive of, or I would be.
Right. Right. Do you want to? Let's talk about the Wellington garage situation, go over some of them. Yeah, I gue- I guess the thing to follow up on, Rick started introducing, but they're called bonus rooms typically, which all the deed-restricted units in Wellington are allowed to, they have garage to put a, put it up above there. Ran out, they, they don't require a parking space. And, uh, the issue with some people doing that is that there's a limit on the capital improvements that you invest into your property per the deed restrictions that you can recoup. And it may be, you know, a certain percentage. And if you go to put in, um, let's say, an eighty, a, a bonus room, and it costs a hundred and fifty thousand to build the garage or apartment above it, then if you, you may not be able to recoup, you probably won't be able to recoup that cost, or just a small portion of it um, from the capital improvements when you go to try to resell it. And so that dissuades people from doing it. So if you do allow it, it allows for potentially additional units. And there are people that have done it for sure. The flip side of it is you then generate a, a higher resale value. So you'd be selling to a different group of, of people. So it won't be the same AMI target when you resell it for five hundred and fifty instead of four hundred. So, but it's an issue that's come up several times and, and we continue to.
Yeah, but you're also creating a revenue stream for the new owner, which offsets those additional dollars that they're paying.
Right, so if you apply for a mortgage and you can say that, you can prove that you're going to have a revenue stream because you're renting to a local, it's not going to be paying rent. Will that person and that AMI be able to get a mortgage to afford that house? You know what I'm saying? Like.
Other rules. It used to be, you had to have a lease to show a bank that you have a current lease to show that that revenue is there, but, yeah, I think most of the time they can.
Is there any way that that could be played in with housing help? If, if someone wanted to do something like that, we could.
Already deed-restricted, though, so you're not buying, we're not protecting it from being a short-term rental.
No, but what we could do is, um, reimburse the owner when they do sell, reimburse them the price of what they, the cost of what they invested into that. And, uh, when they get out of there.
I mean, but then the new owner just got basically a cheap home with it, all the, you know, an apartment thing. I, I'm not worried about. I mean, we're probably only talking a handful of units that would do this, and a few of them go, I would never let it, my recommendation to you would be not to allow, allow somebody to recoup the full cost of that, but a percentage of that. And I think that's reasonable in what we've heard from people, where they can't, I think what they can get is fifteen percent of the original purchase price of the home is what they're allowed to add on as improvements when they resell. But if you said, and up to an additional amount, maybe if you add one of these rooms, maybe you give them, you know, fifty percent of that cost, they could go, I don't think you're driving that unit price up. It's not the, I tell you what, it's not the price of the units that's holding people back in there. It's the lack of units, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, people are paying, we know these unethical deals are still going on where they're paying fifteen grand under the table.
For a couch.
I don't think the fact that they just, you know, they've got a revenue stream, I don't think that's an issue. I think, you know, the bigger issue for us is the density. Is that the right, you know, what are we doing?
Parking space.
One is that, I walked those alleys last night. One would be that we would have to limit the number per alley because otherwise it gets just too congested. And the other thing is they have to provide parking because there's no additional guest parking there. It just isn't there.
Where are you going to provide parking?
Have it next to your pad or you can't do it.
What if you don't, so, I mean.
Could we, well, is there something that we could do to incentivize the ADU, but if they, if they agree that they would rent to somebody without a car? I mean, cause that's, that's kind of, that's one of our goals, right? Fewer cars, you don't need a car as much in, in a neighborhood.
How do you enforce that one?
I don't know.
Yeah.
I think sometimes we forget that a lot of people, the younger demographics live without a car than I did.
You're talking about me?
No.
But we, I mean, we have one car between you two of us.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you know, I, I didn't have one for, for instance, for ten years here, probably.
Getting near to Fred Flintstone.
I just had the keys to my neighbors. Yeah, I mean, there's a certain segment of the population that might be okay with living in a place that doesn't have designated parking.
You gonna open the mic for Kelly? She on the beach or?
Can we make Kelly's face?
She's at Disneyland.
Can you guys hear me? Yes, no?
Kelly, yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. So I actually have a couple of questions. One is, um, Rick had mentioned that there was maybe an agreement gonna go on about the parking, the guest parking on each of the greens. And I was wondering if there's any sort of agreement to allow, um, that to be more used by the neighbors. But also I think it's really important to remember that if we do allow, um, people to incorporate part of the cost of that garage, I think we need to deed-restrict the rent on that garage to be some portion of AMI because the rents in the neighborhood are really, really high for the studio apartments. So if we're going to allow them to incorporate any portion of that cost, that needs to go into that deed restriction.
You do very good work remotely.
A lot of practice.
Wellington is trying to reach a deal with us that would allow them to create some permit parking, long-term permit parking in some of their guest spaces and some of those guest spaces. If you are on Town Right Away, like off of the New Bridge Street through Lincoln Park, there's guest spaces and Town Right Away goes into those guest spaces and so they need the town's permission of the kind of like a licensing agreement to allow a different use, which we wouldn't have a problem with. And we could use something where I mean, what we're trying to do is get people to add ADUs reasonably, right? And take down obstacles to make that happen. And so I but we have a few obstacles that we have to recreate policy to get around right now. And we have a duplex unit. They want to build a unit. They want to build it for their mother. And, you know, and it will be a deed restricted unit in perpetuity and they won't be there forever. And their mom has health issues and probably won't work enough to meet the work requirement, but you know, this and they're short three hundred square feet of density, right? Because those duplex lots had limited density in the master plan. And so there's, but yet their hands are tied on trying to do this and we're trying to find a workable solution around it.
Hope Dave Pringle and Ken Bowes don't hear about this conversation about parking and density in the Wellington.
I don't know if I'm allowed to talk again. Am I? But I just, I really think you guys, we should not be putting up roadblocks to ADUs in the Wellington neighborhood. In my opinion, I think it's a terrific place to have ADUs. It's already high-density living. It, we have bus access. There are parking issues, but I definitely think they can be gotten around. I mean, we have an ADU and there's a parking, you know, our parking pad is their parking. I think that we should be doing everything we can to help to help this move forward, but I actually would stop short of doing any sort of like pay or incentives. I mean, I, I don't think that's the best use of our money. This area is already deed restricted. And I, I think that there are enough people who would take advantage of the program and be able to, you know, put in the money to build a garage. And then if we allow them to recoup some portion, a little bit more of the cost than is currently allowed, I think it would take care of itself.
Good point, Kelly.
But while we're here with you guys, I mean, obviously some of these things we're talking about are going to come down to policy decision with the council that they're going to have to make. And do you, as the planning commissioner, see any red flags we should be aware of?
This may not be a, maybe a clarification. When I was in the Wellington in oh-three, they, you could only add fifteen percent of the house's value in improvements if you were the original owner. Is that still the case?
I think I don't know, but if the original owner did it and you're a new owner, you can't do it again. I think it can only be done once, if I'm correct.
In Gibson Heights, it's fifteen percent of the original purchase price through various owners. So whenever that fifteen percent is met.
I think that's the only thing that I would worry about is that, you know, if I'm the original owner and I sell it to you, Eric, and I haven't done anything to it and you decided to put on an ADU. Back in oh-three, you weren't able to add on a dollar.
Right.
And I just don't know if that's true, still.
It's definitely worth looking into.
We, yeah, we have those things that we can look at quick. I think what we need to do next is bring some recommendations to you on this because a couple of these we want to I mean, with some people waiting on some stuff and we need to get some answers.
We, does the Wellington have any other land in the general vicinity that they could use for parking?
Well, we don't want to give up. We have land at the bottom of Lincoln Park that was dedicated for childcare center. And we've been approached by that, but we don't think that's the right place to park cars. And it's not paved and who's going to pave it? And we don't allow parking on the areas, you know.
Talking about buying a parking space?
No, I'm talking, well.
If there was parking available, right.
I mean, and it's, I think it's something that either the original developer, the HOA should pay for, not the town. And that's not, you know, there's obviously a parking issue in the Wellington already. There's been a parking issue since day one.
Because we had units, there's more of a parking issue.
I thought we were on that.
They're in order, right?
Amazon.
I, I think within the Wellington, it's the parking issue isn't consistent all the way through. Like I live up in Wellington too, and there's never been a guest parking issue anywhere around my house as far as you go back. In fact, we have a bunch of parking, you know, adjacent to the back of the neighborhood that generally has maybe one person's extra car in it. I think towards, you know, where Dennis lives, where it's tighter and also lots are smaller and everything, there is a bit more. But I mean, I think one of the issues that's driving the parking problem there is, is not so much people's personal vehicles. It's just the fact that so many people have chosen to park RVs and campers and other things that aren't technically allowed to be parked in legal parking spaces that the neighborhood has just kind of turned a blind eye to recently.
Let me rephrase. Let me rephrase what I mean by a parking issue. It's not a parking issue today. It's a parking issue if all of a sudden we tell everybody that they can recoup fifty percent of the of what they put into an ADU and we don't require them to add a parking space for that ADU. There might even be a parking problem today, but there is the potential that, that that we're going to exacerbate, you know, so.
Yeah, there's that's, this is a whole, yeah, we could sit here all day and discuss reasons why people's garages have everything but cars in them and all that kind of stuff. But that's Summit County and people live here and they, they want their toys and this is, you know, quality of life. That's a different discussion. So we'll come back on this quickly and try to get some, because there's a couple of things that we're looking at with regards to the Wellington and we discussed one of them in the housing committee today. As we're seeing some things change, it would evolve a change in deed restrictions.
Let's move on. I think we're going to skip amenity clubs since the staff's actually working on some stuff and we've already been in enough heated arguments about that. Let's talk about outdoor bars without talking about anything that's currently. Let's talk about it as a general philosophy for outdoor bars. What did, what did you have in mind, Mark?
Yeah, thanks, Eric. It's just, you know, we've talked about it. We've had a few, it's not something we've seen prevalent in the community, but we've had a few of these pop up. And so the question is, is, you know, do they add to the overall activity level to a point where it's something that we're concerned about? I mean, it's actually in several, you could take several stages. One is outdoor seating, which we've always allowed. You know, without density. Now you add an outdoor bar with the, you know, drinks and everything, you know, in a bar area. Then you could even go the next step, which is a stage and you have outdoor music as well. So we're just wondering if there's any concerns from the council or the planning commission in terms of that particular issue and any limitations that you think might be appropriate beyond what we have right now. Because right now we just, you know, it's free density. Basically, it's not enclosed. So we don't require density for it. And so it can get approved through the planning process pretty easy.
Are we talking like, like permanent? You know, bars facility, you know, that they're putting like structural amenities in there or we just send, set up a table and putting a barwell in and, and you know.
It's, it's structural in several cases recently, yeah.
Example, like what?
Not that we could talk about.
Oh.
East Star is approved and they're, so they went on their back deck.
So they have a bar just out on their back?
Bar out there, yeah.
It's like they're
Doesn't change the space that they have now.
Concern me, but noise, noise levels and music accompany, for the neighbors in the near vicinity.
Yeah, yeah. And then if you have a bar, I mean, the noise of glasses and everything, it can add to it. I don't know if it's significant enough for a concern, but, you know, there's definitely, we've been hearing some things from the community about.
How do you guys feel about this as just a general concern?
The free density on a rooftop has a lot of code, building code and life safety concerns. And I, I know that's a step below planning and zoning, but it seems like a real opportunity for bar owners to really create a lot of square footage. And the one we saw recently concerned me a lot. It's a noisy place and I
can't stop. Not, yeah, let's not talk about it.
Without talking about that, I think rooftops should almost be viewed differently than decks or patios. Because I think they have a, there's a different safety issue and I think the noise emanates differently from a open rooftop area versus where you have a on a patio or a deck, usually you have at least one side of that. You know, if not two, maybe a building is helping to block some of that sound and you could and we have a lot of rooftops because of our flat roofs in the historic district, right? And those businesses that could be used for, I think what you could do.
Well, listen, I, I think there is a larger concern with music slash dancing or anything like that on any, any type of structure that's outside because they're, they're generally, I mean, decks in this town that have been built are not necessarily up to that kind of code. We learned through the construction planning of the parking structure that we will not be allowed to have bands or a stage for some kind of special event on top of parking structure because of the difference in vibrational energy that comes off of people dancing and bands. And there have been cases in the United States where some of these places have collapsed because of that. They're not that parking structure, which will park a bunch of cars, would not hold a bunch of people dancing with vibrational music. And that we were told during the planning process, you cannot do that. So I think there is some larger concerns for the town as sort of the, the health and safety, you know, experts that you know, we just don't allow these just going, going forward potentially.
On our old buildings.
Out, yeah, on our old buildings, you know, outside of even the noise issue, which is a huge concern also.
But how about just a bar itself with no music?
I don't have a problem with.
I kind of, I mean.
A bar is a deck. I mean, Jay put a bar out, it wouldn't change the amount of people that he had. As a matter of fact, it would take out, you'd probably have to remove a couple of tables.
I, I just, I would like to be as flexible as possible for the next year or so and try to let some of these.
We're talking the end of the future here. This is, we got to make sure that we're, what we're talking with these guys about is something that they can, they can code-based plan now going forward.
As a safety, I mean, so who? If there's a restaurant right now that has a roof that was built without the idea of people being on it, how do we know if it's sound for having a lot of people on that roof? Right? Like how, what?
Well, you don't.
You have to be engineered.
I mean, if they, if, if they were operating on it in an area like that, that was not permitted to do, then we could shut it down until it was permitted for that type of activity. So if somebody comes in and applies for a rooftop type patio, then they have to have an engineering report that shows what the capacity of what it could handle. And I would hope that it would be based on, and there's a difference between standing and dancing.
Yeah.
Me.
But that's, that's based, that's based on more than just what our code says it's based on.
No, but that's, but that's the only way. Then, then it's an enforcement issue to make. Because if they say it can hold, example, forty-five people, you have to hope that they're following the rules and that it doesn't double to ninety because then you could have a catastrophe.
Yeah, yeah.
Roofs are not built to the same structural limits as floor.
Yeah.
Do we have any examples of rooftop seating? Like I'm thinking of South Ridge. Is that more of a deck patio or is that truly a rooftop?
Modus has some too.
It's a rooftop. Modus has some. Eric's used to, I mean, when the terrace was up there.
Terrace used to be, yeah. I mean, I, I think there's a, I think we need to draw a distinction between outdoor bar and outdoor music venue.
Yes.
I think there's, I think there's a big distinction between those two things.
Does it need to be a bar or is it just allow seating?
I don't know what the difference is though, really, Dick. I mean, like I said, if, if anything, if you add a bar, you're probably taking some seating away anyway.
Yeah, but you're adding to the frequency of service. Likely.
Or, well, if it's a stand, I guess you could have a stand-up area bar.
But, yeah, that's splitting hairs, but yeah, music, I. I mean, we already have code issues dealing with noise. We have code issues dealing with outdoor speakers that can only be operating if that outdoor area is open.
Yeah, but those are tough too, Rick, because to have the despoles to the point where we can have events and then also have that applied to the bars, we've found in neighborhoods already that, you know, they're compliant to our, to our ordinance, but it's too loud for the neighborhood, way too loud.
You could hear Burke and Riley's from Warriors Month. And, but I wonder if it's because it's, it's higher up, right?
Sure.
So maybe that, those adds in the projection.
Sound travels.
So is there something else you guys can take on for us? Let's pile some more stuff on your shoulders.
Things that wasn't mentioned and I'm wondering if that's because you're all okay with it is the visual impacts of these rooftop decks and whether you're talking about modus or South Ridge or Burke and Riley's. And, and if that was to continue and those were to multiply, are you okay with the visual impact in the historic district of these, of these rooftops and what they do? And plus having residential in the close proximity to where these mostly be, because it is mixed use where you have commercial and residential right on top of each other and the way that sound travels. Yes, it is another deck, but it is not on the, you know, residential we usually see on the second floor, third floor. And that's now where you have those patios. In front of us in November was the Adams, Adams Place Townhouses where they, now we're going from commercial to residential, but where they want, they got approved for rooftop patios on, on their townhouses. And I think that's one of the things that just in your consideration of this, are you okay with that continuing? Because, you know, as we've seen in Denver and Boulder, that is a more of a modern style and more of things what you're going to see. And so from a commercial as well as a residential standpoint, how do you feel about the visual impacts in these certain areas of town, whether it's the historic district or you know, the north side residential or north side commercial or any of those?
What was the way? I'm okay with it visually. I think it adds some vibrancy to the, to the town. I mean, I think if you, if it's handled correctly, you know, if it's umbrellas you're seeing and that kind of thing, I think that, I think that lends something that they have in Lodo that I think is very cool. I think that the issues of, you know, noise, safety, those kind of things, I think can be handled from a policy level, whether it is whether it is some kind of screening that needs to be up, some kind of setback from, from the edge that you can talk about to sort of limit, you know, some of those other issues. But from a purely visual standpoint, I don't have a, I don't have a real issue with it. I mean, honestly, I'd rather see people in umbrellas than some of the stuff I have on top of my roof, some of our mechanical stuff. So.
I can't think of an example where it's been an issue. I mean, like, I don't even know if you can see.
It will be an issue though. The more that you have, and even in Lodo and even in Golden and other places where they're having much more mixed use and they're building, you know, they're building the residential and mixed into the business areas, what you see the majority of those are, you know, traffic noise related issues because and so you have to look at things like do you shut downs? Maybe you prohibit those activities by a certain time of night and allow them after ten P M. or something because you, I spent the better half of my first part of my career here. Part of my career here doing nothing but trying to, you know, deal with noise issues at La Cima.
But the visual issues though, like, I'm not sure if we can see, like with.
From a visual standpoint, like Eric said, it adds, you know, vibrancy and having that, but, but. Along with that is the use of that and the people. And even if you shut the music down, people are loud. They've been drinking and they're talking. We get. The outdoor patios at La Cima in the summer, we have so many complaints because Main Street Station, they open their windows. Across the street and they hear those, they can operate until bar closing, right? One thirty in the morning. And they keep those people awake across the street. And so the more of those types of things that you have. Especially in the summer months, you're gonna have more complaints.
How does the plexiglass that's on the? The Whiskey Star's back deck operate? Does that?
You need something more porous like to, to mitigate acoustics.
I mean, luckily that's.
Jay, I'm with Eric. I, I like the vibrancy. I don't like the noise, especially for residential neighbors that are clear by. Nearby.
I'm intrigued by an early closing time.
But you know, I, I'll say there are, there are mitigating steps you can take to kind of absorb the sound and, you know, it's nothing. It's not plexiglass, but.
But who's, who's the judge of that? The neighbors?
Well, but it's a decibel level, right? Like, I mean.
I'm saying if, if in the code, we required, you know, a certain type of uh fabric that would, that would muffle the sound. And then, then they're creating new stuff all the time.
Maybe make people wear robes.
I understand what you're saying, but. I like Dick's idea of a time limit. Especially when it abuts residential neighborhoods.
Yeah, I agree. And I, I completely hear what you're saying, Rick. Yeah, but I agree about the vibrancy.
Take that back, talk about outdoor bars and see where, you know, making it worse. Comes from you guys. I mean, if you come back to us and say, look, this is just, you know, we talked it through, this is not gonna work. We wanna. We wanna put a prohibition on, you know. Rooftop spaces and. That's why we look to you as the experts with, with staff to um go over these things, so.
A lot of this is gonna be site specific. Really is.
Especially safety issues. Like we need to. Take those seriously.
That scared you, didn't it?
Oh, my gosh. Yeah. Old buildings, people falling through the roof. Yeah.
Uh, parking requirements, shared parking, what's that?
Couple things there, Eric. Um, one, we've had discussions about in some situations, should we be considering? A shared parking model. Um, right now, our code requires that every project parks itself. But there may be situations that um you could make better use of parking. Um, the classic example, of course, is like a church and, you know. Sundays, it's busy in the parking for it and really don't need it the rest of the week. And you may have a business. You know, adjacent to it that could share the same parking um area for that time period. So um, that's kind of the first issue. If that's something we would consider. Um, you know, looking at in our code is some allowance and maybe it's not full just, you can all use the same spaces, but there's some. Percentage or something like that that we could address from that. And the second issue with parking. Is um, has to do with um. We have minimum amounts of parking, but we don't have maximum amounts of parking. And I know we've had that discussion recently, like in, in terms of amenity clubs. You know, for example, up at the East PK Hotel, they, you know, they built, I think originally proposed like two hundred additional. Parking spaces above what he had needed. He ended up doing more like, I think a hundred. I was talking to Chris about that today, but nevertheless. You know, getting to that parking issue that, you know, Dick was kind of honing in on a couple of weeks ago. Do we want to consider some maximums on parking? There may be several reasons for that. One is just, you know, removing them. Limiting the amount of impervious surface, things like that as well. So um, wanted to get some feedback and we really haven't had a lot of discussion. Um, on that with planning commission, although there have been a couple of projects recently you've seen where that could come into play.
That's okay.
Yeah, you have that or dig deeper and.
You have, you have an example of that?
Other than churches.
I could tell you, we're gonna bring one forward to you, cause we'll have the, the new housing project that's gonna be adjacent to the potential proposed. Nonprofit center that where you're gonna have, you know, housing that's required X and the nonprofit use type stuff would be X. And housing's gonna park in the evening, right? Nonprofit in the day, why can't we share those? We see it on the mixed use out on Airport Road all the time. Where you're at, right? Yeah, and those were all under. Yeah, so, and I mean. Takes up a lot of uh prime land that, you know, so we don't wanna lose housing units because we have to park. Have, you know, two hundred and fifty surface parking spaces. If we only can use two hundred, that's more housing units we can have. But we, you know, I mean, it's a town project, we could get around it, but there's probably other things where it could apply out there. Not requiring so much parking. Yeah, Christie may be right. I mean, it probably is a case by case, but boy, we've gotta figure out some guidelines, so it's just not wide open.
We've had a couple of projects, one that we can't talk about yet, a couple in the past. Where we've been very strict about requiring a written parking agreement recorded. So that it's all set out there and it's not gonna be changed on the fly by the people who are there. And then the next owner of the property or the business comes in with their eyes wide open as to what the parking agreement is. So we're aware of that. We see it. And I mean, it's a great idea. If you just got a big concrete space sitting empty for. Uh, six out of seven days of the week, use it for something if you can.
Do you think that format is suitable just to codify it that it's required to have this written agreement?
I think the county allows it under certain conditions. I think there's a parking study and hours of operation. Depending upon the use, so that.
I know the, so Interstate Parking, they just, you know, that does our contract stuff. They did a uh study in Minnesota. On a new development and show where they were able to quantify and show that where the code required. For lack of better, five hundred spaces, they were able to show the shared model that would cut it down like three hundred. And serve both need, and serve the needs properly of that. So maybe there, maybe. We do something, we don't just give somebody a ticket to put in less parking, but if they can show. Through X, Y, Z, that it would work, either through agreement, study, et cetera, then maybe that's amendment, how we amend something to allow it to be there. Cause currently the only process would be a development agreement, right?
Well, and I do, I mean, one of our goals is fewer cars, more boots and bikes. I think at some point. If we're, if we're building more parking, because we just don't believe in this goal being accomplished. And we're never going to accomplish the goal. And so I think some of this, both ideas I think are great as far as. Sharing parking, encouraging, but that has to go hand in hand with encouraging people to use less parking. And I also agree, yeah, I, I, I don't like the idea that people include extra parking spots. I mean, I have that as a comment with the, with our housing project that we'll be talking about later, about why, why? Why include more parking? Because I feel like then it gets used. So. I'm in favor of exploring both options.
I think we agree with you, but maybe for a different reason, the fact that we don't wanna see breakers become an asphalt landscape, right? If, if we can manage that, we would love to have that tool available to us.
I, I think it needs to be very site specific though, because, you know, we have a hotel on the other side of town that got away with. Underparked. They're super underparked. They were gonna do some, they have a valet. Agreement in place and they have come to us now multiple times to use town. Parking. And that we do not want, you know, that's not, that's not the intent there. So I think there's definitely a use situation, you know. For the, for the shared pieces, I think that's pretty easy. And then for this other, for this other parking requirement piece, I think it just depends on what. You know, what are they doing? Is it a hotbed use? I don't think you can get away from one parking space per room at any point. I also don't think you should overpark those things in any situation. We just need to make sure that we're. Adequately parking everything so we don't have them then using public parking. Which are really built for a different reason, so.
To Steve's point, can we require that it's on the deed?
Oh, yeah. I mean, I think we can add any of that stuff in. Really, what we need, you know, this is always. I mean, you obviously always pay a consultant to give you the answer that you're searching for. It's really up to the planning commission to dig through and the staff to dig through that report and say. You know, this is either B S or not. I mean, we've had parking stu- or traffic studies done about the same intersection by different companies. That have told either the town side of the story or the developer side of the story, so. Pursue that path. Mark, they give you enough to think about?
Yeah, thanks.
Driveways, excessive site disturbance, which this has been going on since the beginning, so.
I can start this one. Um, so we've had discussions, I, um, what we did with the comprehensive code amendments about a year and a half ago. Is we gave the opportunity for minus two, back before it was always minus four, it was as low as you could assign. And so staff was, you know, if it was an egregious switchback in driveway or something, they would get negative points. Um, but what we saw a lot of situations that were in between is like, boy, you know, this, this, you know, it's. Covering a lot of, you know, native vegetation, et cetera, with these disturbances. And, you know, if we had negative two, it'd be a good opportunity to less penalize some of these projects. Um, that really don't deserve four. So anyway, we made that amendment. Now we're uh, you know, we're having some discussions in recent applications regarding um. The proposal comes in and maybe in staff's opinion, it was, you know, in order to meet grade. And get your driveway into your garage, it was probably about as efficient as it could be. However, there's still a fair amount of site disturbance associated with that. And so the commission has on several occasions said. You know, even though they're getting in pretty efficiently, it's still a lot of disturbance and it deserves minus two. And uh, so we've been having that discussion and kind of thought it'd be good to get some council input on that. Um, and certainly feel free to speak up, commission on that as well.
We have an interesting one that plays into the scrape and rebuild issue. Houses there with a excessively large paved driveway area and parking space. And the, the new owners who are gonna scrape it off want the driveway on the other side. So now you've got two disturbances, which the argument went back and forth. I didn't prevail on that one, but uh, I think that's an excessive disturbance. If you've already got a driveway. And now you're gonna have a new one and cut down a bunch of more trees to have a new driveway. You gotta pay the price for it. But it comes into this redevelopment issue. Because you've already got a space with no vegetation, because you've already got a driveway and a parking area. If you don't like that one, do you have to pay to have a different one? So those are kind of point issues that I think we're wrestling with.
Common sense.
Uh, you know, there, I think there are a couple of different, you know, like everything, there's different, the, the um, the scrape. I totally agree with you. When we get to some places that we've cited, building envelopes. I think we have to be more lenient with what we do with points because we've told them this is where your house has to go. There's an opportunity to put a house in a, in a location where the driveway is shorter. I think you have it well within your rights if they've decided to put it at the far end of the envelope, to give them the maximum points. Whether that driveway is sighted in the best possible manner or not. If chosen to put the house there. You gotta pay for that driveway if it's, if it's excessively disturbed. Especially for those places that don't have an envelope. And in the case of a scrape, there's a driveway there, that should be the driveway. The home should be sighted. At the end of that driveway, and if not, they need to pay the points. I mean, that's the whole thing about a flexible zone. You can go ahead and change that. You've just gotta mitigate the damage that you're doing now. And, you know, the place you mitigated with landscaping in that point, that's the. Perfect example of mitigating what you've, what you've done. You gotta tear that, that pad up and you've gotta re-vedge that area to. What it looks like on the other side. That's fairly. Consistent. With how we think about these things. I've been in the middle of a couple of things in the Highlands when I was on planning where we did really long switchbacky driveways that got pretty ugly with. Multiple retaining walls and retaining walls that at the time we didn't have. Nearly the regulation on retaining wall height and it really just got out of hand. And it was really the, the homeowner who, that decided that they wanted these views. So they were gonna push all the way to the very back of the, of the lot. I think those things, we need, we really need to. Look, you can do it, you've gotta mitigate.
So with that suggestion, are you saying that? There should be a range between negative four and negative two?
And they have that, they do have that. It's just how, it's how that's interpreted as far as what they can do. And what, what I'm sort of getting at is. Just because the driveway is at the sort of the least um. Engineering, it is the eat, the, the best possible way to get that driveway up there. They've decided to cite their home at the very back of the envelope. They've sort of.
Which I think we're gonna see more of.
Sure, that's, I mean, that happens all the time.
Yeah, the other example is they don't want steps between the garage and the kitchen. And so it takes a much longer driveway to get the. Up to the garage level floor. And sometimes we encourage them to, you know, push the garage floor down and they won't.
That's legitimate for them to do, but with flexible zoning, you're gonna take negative four for that. And I think that's completely legitimate. As you, as you work through these things with precedent, that that's just, that's precedent. You are more than welcome to build your house that way. With flexible zoning, this is what you're gonna have to mitigate.
And so, you know, two of the issues we went through illustrating both of this was, one was. Uh, the new build was on April of um. I believe it was April twentieth, uh, and it was ninety-five North Woods. And that was what Mike was alluding to of where the, the lot was maybe. Um, you know, we're, we're talking about, and one of the things that the commission is uh talking about is. As land gets more sparse, we're getting harder to build on lots. And this is one of those where. We ultimately assign negative two be, and even though it was probably because of the grade and the slope. It was a probably a necessary driveway, but the fact was, is that there's ways of making up those points. And if you had excessive disturbance, which in this case was not a necessary disturbance, but excessive, which there's a difference. Um, you need to find a way to make up those points. And in this case, they eliminated the heated driveway, which I don't think is bad. I think as. Buyer beware, when you go into these lots, that. You need to do your due diligence and know whether there, how much clearing there's gonna be and what the prices to pay on that. And that's why we have a point system of plus and minus in our, in, in our opinion. With the one that Mike was referring to was May fourth, uh, one fourteen North Goldflake. And the difficult part. On this, I'm sorry, this is one that Stephen, yeah, I'm sorry, the one that Stephen was uh, on May fourth, was on one fourteen North Goldflake. And the difficult part was, it wasn't, this wasn't one of those long winding driveways. It was simply on the other side. And it was still a relatively uh brief. Driveway, but it didn't correspond with how they wanted to orient the house. And so where. Where is our guidelines on that in, in that case? And where do we wanna be? Um, because I think, again, as lots become less and less available, where they see a lot more scrapes. I think that this is a pre. I think that this is a precursor to something that's going to come in front of us a lot more.
The existing driveway was too steep and too wide. So it had been substantially altered. It was also on the north side of the house. So from a maintenance standpoint, I think donors want to move it to the south. So there is a couple of their mitigating circumstances with that one.
Could, could we add a policy provision that any driveway, any existing driveway that is relocated needs to be built driveway needs to be revegetated to the
Something about revegetation.
Where that microphone is.
Don't let that make fool out.
What did Kelly say?
Kelly.
Kelly, what's up?
Sorry, I couldn't, you guys are really hard to hear all of a sudden. I'm not sure why.
Did you make a comment about revegetation?
Did you have a comment about revegetation? Eric brought up something about requiring revegetation if they move a driveway or?
Yeah, I, I was wondering the same thing as if it's, um, if it, if the, uh, area is revegetated, then do they still get the negative four points just for moving it?
Well, in one, in the case of, of one fourteen, did they abandon the old driveway? Or is it still paved?
No, they're, they're banning that and they're re-vegging and they had, you know, actually fairly large. So it was, it was more just that re-veg was an issue, I think, in some of the commissioners' minds, that it was just that they did already used the space and it was already disturbed.
And how long had that driveway been functioning as is?
Long time. And the, the issue was they didn't take any negative points for switching their driveway.
Well, you know, theoretically, they take a negative hit for moving it and then they can get a positive for.
Or revegetating.
Yeah, yeah.
And that would ensure it. Does that make sense to you guys?
Yeah, but we probably wouldn't give, we, we could change the code, but we typically wouldn't just for re-vegging a driveway give positive two points. It'd be more, it's more for buffering the, you know, from the street, from adjacent properties. Yeah.
Hey, do we have enough, uh, teeth in our code to, so we'll never see gates?
Yes.
I'm thinking of putting one up.
You're worried about driving somebody's property?
Well, I just want to get a moat in front of my place.
All right. Does that give you some, some idea of where we, where we are on driveways? It's funny, you know, when I, when I started on planning commission, we used to have provision in the code that you weren't allowed to build on anything over fifteen percent. And it was, I mean, it was in the code. We were designing the Highlands and we brought it up. It was a huge ordeal that that's in the code. It was like, what do you mean that's in the code? Fifteen percent. I mean, they build on stuff now that's forty percent. Pretty crazy how stuff changes. Um, anything else on redevelopment and scrape offs? Do we need to add anything? I mean, do you have any, anything you want to add to the code on? We've talked about this for a long time too, is should we have a, almost a separate section on scrape offs, but?
I think you've hit it. I think size of the, the home on, on the lot is a big issue.
Yeah. Yeah. The only other thing is if there's, you know, and it really depends on a better recycling system in this county. But to reuse the materials when these scrape offs go, I mean, there's a lot of energy going into creating new buildings. Lot to went into the original. So if we can ever get to that point, that would be something that would be, you know, we could have some requirements around that.
I mean, I think in the end, the, the real outside of that piece, the detrimental part is scrape offs happen in traditionally local neighborhoods where there were traditionally sort of a similar sized house and those scrape offs become considerably larger than, and it changes the complexion of your, of your street is totally different
It is.
than it was ten years ago.
Well, and it was a workforce housing unit going to a hotel.
Right. So.
Hasn't, haven't we talked about this before too, with like the historic district of, of having a little historic house attached to the big?
Yes, we have. And I think we've solved that one. And I think you guys have done a good job of, of sort of changing what we were doing with that, you know, small front and a huge back. I think that's, that's been handled. So the historic district isn't a problem. The Wellington isn't really the problem. It's really.
White horn, but is, is the Highlands coming next? I mean, you know, the Highlands is aging some of the original homes.
Yeah.
Is that convenient?
I mean, unless you want to do it, you know, some policy stuff on, you know, allowing only a certain percentage of, of what the original mass or density and mass were or that the problem is, or the problem stems from the fact that we have unlimited density on residential lots. So as long as you, you play within either the envelope or the, or the setbacks, you can build as big as you want. And that's really where that stems from, which is why that home size policy was something we tried to do for places like Warriors Mark and the White Horn.
Yeah. I, I really feel it like it falls in line with preserving the authentic character of recognition. You know, for, I, I just have goals on the mind because of what's in here. But I do, I, I think that that has something, you know, as far as if we go right or left here, I feel like One Direction does have something to do with preserving the authentic culture of Breckenridge. And so, yeah, I, I would be more looking at it. Yeah.
So as Eric can appreciate, um, we did, when we made that original attempt back in two thousand eight, Julie and I worked on that. We were more aggressive originally with that in terms of, you know, the square footage was, were much less. There was massive pushback, um, at open houses that we put on and then we regrouped. And we basically compromised the end of the day. And, uh, you know, we're certainly willing to look at that again, but there will be pushback if we try to do that.
I, I hate to say that we were right, but we were right with those original calculations. That there is no doubt that these neighborhoods would look more like they did originally than like they do now. With some of the size, um, restrictions that were, that were going to go into place. Man, I get yelled at like walking down the street. Guys pull up and yell at me about that whole thing. Good stuff. I think you might have known.
To what Mark said, um, I happened to witness on Goldflake, uh, the Frieza's old house getting torn down within, I think it was within two or three days. And everything that was there went in a dumpster. And I'm sure it went to the landfill. So, um.
Why it happened twice last year in my neighborhood.
You guys have any ideas on how we deal with that environmentally? I don't.
Certain, um, as you're aware of, like, um, the hers rating, if, um, if they're allowed to be more, if they're proven to be more energy efficient, they get a couple of points if, um, you know, the, where as these scrape offs become more prevalent, if they can have, again, I, I keep going back to the fact that everything we've talked about today, you know, requires, puts the onus on, on Rick and chief here of enforcement and like, let's make sure that, you know, these, everything's permitted and that, you know, the building size and rent escalators, indebted units and all these things. It's just, everything is on enforcement. And so I hate to put or even suggest that more things need to be enforced and monitored and, and visited and all that, because it's just, it's not effective. Um, at least currently. But I think that there would be a place for positive points. Um, if the plans call for a certain amount of recycling of current, uh, material on site.
Recycle slash reuse.
Correct.
It's here because there's been eight of them in.
But we've been told by Jesse that construction recycling is fairly limited right now. So it's an industry issue too.
So you're really talking about reuse.
Good try.
I wrap it up?
Yeah. Any final thoughts from you guys? Any last questions or?
Last thing I do want to visit really quick is the positive points for landscaping.
Oh, yeah.
Um, we're, we're running into an issue where there seems to be a disconnect of firewise, defensible space, space, and when we're giving two and four points on landscaping, we'd love just to see where you guys stand on that. Uh, so we just kind of know where to move forward. Um, on these, because, you know, it, it's, it seems like, you know, the landscape is, is a gimme two points every time. You know, if they stick up an aspen, it's two points, you know, or whatever. Christie would disagree. She has, she knows exactly the numbers, but I don't.
Sure, remind you.
Don't worry.
But where, where do you guys stand on where, how? So much has changed over the last couple of years with our wildfire scenario and droughts and, and obviously we, we project that to happening in the future and we don't want to encourage, um, or endorse fuel, uh, for, for those. Um, but at the same time, we do still want to have the screening and all the appropriate uses. So love to see what you think.
Anyone?
I think you bring in the, you know, before you add any points, you know, award any points or distract any points. You, you bring in someone from red, what, red, white and blue and, and verify the, uh, you know, is this, is this aesthetics that could, that could burn down your neighbor's house? Or is this aesthetics that will shade, uh, you know, screen your house from your neighbors?
A lot of it depends on where you are too. I mean, it's again, site specific. There's a difference between some of the stuff that we've given points for in the historic district compared to what we've done in, in your neighborhood in the Highlands. So. Um, but I, I think a move to more firewise and less, um, water, um, intensive landscaping would be a positive thing. So if somebody came to you and said, um, look, I want to put in, you know, twenty spruce and water them all. Somebody else came in and said, look, I'm going to do something a little less water intensive and more firewise, maybe more aspen, maybe let, whatever, whatever that is. I, I think you can start creating some precedent a, as a change there, um, to, to give, to give credence to the people that are spending the time and the energy to, to go to things that are more firewise and less water intensive. And I think that's okay to, to go to that. I mean, for a while now, we've talked about the whole zero scape thing. And while that doesn't really, that, that doesn't really fit with, with what we do. I think there's a philosophy there that we can begin to follow and still give those points. Just make them for the right thing. The points don't always have to be about putting a bunch of bushy stuff up so your neighbor can't see you. Really needs about, be about creating the proper atmosphere around your home so that it not only fits in your neighborhood, um, but is also the right stuff for our community. And as we try to transition from a lodge pole for us to, you know, something that's more spruce, aspen, um, I think we need to encourage people to do that.
And to staff's credit, they did rewrite the landscaping code to do that. So in, um, most of our single family site plans, we see the architect does draw around the line of defensible space relation to the proposed landscaping.
Great. One other thing is we've been finding, um, there's less and less projects that plus four is just going to apply to. And we think that's fine. We've always said that in the historic district, you're not going to get there. But, um, there have been some lively debates about plus two versus plus four recently. And, um, you know, I think, you know, unless you can make a really strong case that it's accomplishing some significant public benefit, most cases it's probably going to be plus two is kind of how the commission's been leaning. And I think staff generally agrees with that.
That's great.
I'm supportive of that as well.
Well, thanks for meeting with us. Thanks for the hard work. Yeah.
Real quick, I'm just curious how you guys feel about the mass calculation on dumpsters. About quite a few times.
Oh.
Or were you, or were you gonna ask us?
No, that's just, I, whatever you want to do for dumpsters is fine. My frustration is that the way the code is written is not how it's being interpreted. If we are allowing, we're allowing, if a dumpster enclosure has a small mesh opening or one inch between the slats, the density, well, the mass is forgiven. That's not how our code is written. And I'm concerned about the unintended consequences of precedent. What if somebody wanted to do that for a maintenance shed of five hundred square feet? What if they want to do and close their carport? There's precedent right there. And just, I mean, Eric, you remember back in the day, and I know codes or interpretations change over time, right? But back in the day, we had the Bobby Craig design. It had the openings for dumpsters and we counted it because there was a wall and a roof on it. Even at the BBC, one of the other planners wanted to count the outdoor storage racks with the roof on it. Be as mass, they had to add to their master plan that that square footage wouldn't be counted. So, um, I'm just concerned we're not following the code. Please change the code if you don't want us to count it.
I, I think you follow the code. I mean, if that's what the code says, you follow the code. That's what we always preach.
There's also no cap on the size of a dumpster enclosure. So if there's no, if it doesn't count on mass and there's no cap, there's a, a risk there.
Could have a big dumpster.
Could be an ADU.
Could be an ADU. If you need restrict it, we'll let you do it.
Yeah.
You know how I feel about what we do. It's always about the code. If you don't think the code is right, change the code. And that, that's it. It, you know, there are some things that are not open to interpretation. I know there are some that are. But if it doesn't fit the, the letter of the law, then, you know, you guys are the planning commission. You enforce it the way you read it. Uh, I mean, if, if it is black and white like that, and that's what you feel, that's the way you need to, that's the way you need to do it. You know, Bobby Craig is like Beetlejuice because you mentioned his name and he just walked out. No, seriously. I mean, that's from the day that I got on planning commission, Tim, Tim Berry said to me, just follow the code. And then if the code's not working, then you go to the council and you change the code.
And do we want that part changed, I guess, because don't we want to encourage our trash dumpsters to be more disguised?
So they're more. That needs to be in the code, that they need to be covered. They need to be of a certain, I mean, they're, it sounds like there definitely needs to be a size limitation.
And but, and also if we look at areas of how we want to, you know, embark on improving the Riverwalk experience and how we're going to disguise.
They're different too, because those are town, I mean, those are town.
Yeah, but wouldn't there ever be a business one? So where are we seeing the problem? Are these, these are commercial?
Airport Road.
Well, maybe while we're looking at the maximum size, we should look at the minimum size too, so that we actually really do have sufficient space for.
For recycling.
Recycling and all of those.
Right now, we can't follow the code because of precedent. Precedent's been set, you know, staff has brought it to us showing that in a dozen examples, you know, the, the, the mass didn't count.
The other thing I'd say is staff probably has a little different interpretation of the code. And that's why we've had that precedence for a while. So I think we need to have discussion about this is what's the right approach moving forward? And absolutely, let's correct the code so it's clear.
It's the only way to do it.
So do we look at this again?
No, we'd let them hash it out and then bring us whatever code change they.
Okay.
Miss the days when somebody from council was on. Um, thank you for everything you guys do. We know it's.
Yes, thank you.
We at least get to talk to the public. I'm telling you, it's the hardest part about planning is you cannot talk to people about what you're doing. It really does make it more difficult than, I mean, when we, we start doing something, I can have ninety arguments on the street about stuff where you can't talk about a rooftop bar right now because it's in the process and you're a judge. And that just, it, it's really a diff, it makes a big change in how you, um, react to what you do. So, so thank you from all of us. And thanks for showing up tonight.
Yeah. Good discussion. Thanks.
Uh, let's take a quick five minutes. Bye Kelly. Kelly, she's gone.
She's already gone.
The first right of refusal or whatever it is, the uh and the the paying for density if we sell it. It to not be a church as well as the easement on the west side down the uh the gulch there. So that was all approved for us. We needed that approval for our trustees to be able to sign the agreement with you. If indeed it passes.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Anything else? Thank you, Chris. Uh we have an emergency ordinance to approve a long-term lease with Breckenridge Film Festival for the Eclipse Theater.
Uh Mayor and Council, we're requesting this as an emergency ordinance because we need to be able to sign and execute this lease with Breckenridge Film immediately so that they they have to have a signed lease agreement in order to go get their liquor license, et cetera. In order for them to start trying to operate late summer, which is basically what we have prepared for you to look at here is a proposed ten-year lease with Breckenridge Film. Uh in this document, it says it will be, you know, doing business as the Eclipse Theater. They chose the Eclipse Theater because they worked with Larissa at BHA and found out that one of the original or first ever theaters in Breckenridge was called the Eclipse Theater. I don't know who knows about it.
I don't either.
No, the speakeasy, we're told the previous owner of, you know, operator, I will call him owner, operator of that has rights to that name, although it's probably, they probably have rights under a certain way of because it's actually spelled theater, T R E and theater, T E R in two different places differently. So I don't know, we can debate what the name should be, but the real, let's talk about the meat of the lease. It's a ten-year lease. But we have a right to get out of it without cause at any we want, if things aren't working out, and they have a right to get out too, if it's not working out for them. So we're not locked in for 10 years. I think that's important for for you to know. They will operate the lease guaranteed to operate at forty-eight weeks out of the year. A couple of those weeks during really slow seasons, they may only operate it on weekends because it just, you know, the the business wouldn't be there for that. They will continue to work uh with BCA to help facilitate other uses, whether it's the BTO doing, you know, the pre-summer, pre-winter preview that we do in there, as long as it doesn't conflict. Typically, those are different hours and they don't conflict with with theater uses. The rent that they want to pay is equal to our maintenance costs and and including the cleaning costs. So it's around twenty-two hundred dollars uh a month. Based, the cleaning can dictate that plus or minus a little bit each month is what they want to pay. The one new thing that we're suggesting, we used to, you know, under the original operator, we did a percentage, but then that even that percentage went away and we, I think we were only still collecting two or twenty-five hundred a month or something. So it's not a big difference. What we've asked them to do is we're okay with them covering expenses while they're in there, but we've asked them to create what we call a capital kind of improvement fund, which will be used towards improvements made to the facility. And we're gonna do that based off of twenty-five percent of their net operational revenues. And we realize there may not be any revenues the first six months or something, but but that will go into this fund. And we want to see how how that works for us. And the town, I think, in helping to cover improvements that need to happen over time. And I would suggest that this is, you know, the model of this lease and how we're doing it is is how we should proceed and you know, if we uh end up doing something with backstage.
Do we know?
We should, we should treat them both equally.
Do we have any, are they, are they gonna do like, like just artsy movies? Or they're gonna have?
They'll do everything, first runs.
Okay.
What they, indie, some in independent stuff. In the biz, we call it indie.
Yeah, no subtitles.
I take it by Jeffrey's tone. He doesn't like artsy. I just don't like subtitles. I can't read that fast.
First runs are not are like what you would see at a regular commercial, right? I had that was
rowdy scenes.
I I think they're all real.
And they said first runs would be during peak season and then the indies and they're gonna do stuff with kids and they they really were, had a pretty exciting presentation and that reserve or capital fund Rick's talking about really had an eye on the projector because that's the big number. Now we've helped with that.
Yeah. Uh whoa, when did we build that fourth, fifteen? I think we opened twenty fifteen.
Upgraded the sound. Maybe it's just sound, but I thought.
I don't think the project, do we do, we did sound upgrades, right?
Yeah.
But we didn't do any.
But there was some film upgrade. It's fine. It's not.
Then the capital improvement fund, are there significant changes with the previous tenant?
What do you mean?
Like rent amount, lease term?
Uh no, they had a ten-year originally. I think that it's similar. I I, you know, the other tenant was only required to be open forty weeks out of the year. And so that we, what we said, we want to see it activated more. Uh I think there's more of a partnership opportunity now and, you know, to work, I think that Breck Film is one of our critical arts partners already in working with BCA. And so I uh I'm excited. I know they're excited. I think Gary, Gary Martinez will be here probably tonight for the reading to make some comments. And uh I think they're very, very appreciative of this opportunity and they're excited to get in there. Well, probably we're moving. Um it looks like we're gonna move the COVID testing to the transit building. Um we've met with them on site and Shannon's been working with them to move. So we'll probably have them out of there and operating in transit on Jul- uh July eighth, ninth, Friday, the ninth, and we'll turn the keys over to the film at that time. So.
Just probably a pretty good timing with their liquor license.
When you say um updates to the backstage theater lease, is that, are you talking about that twenty-five percent?
Yeah, I don't think we have a lease. We, what we do with backstage now is part of that, what's that other document called? The resident company agreement as opposed to a lease like this. And we need to move, we need to move to a lease like this so that we're treating both of these entities equally, I believe, is my recommendation.
Is BCA the landlord?
Well, the town, BCA is in this lease is, manages it on our behalf, but we it's, this is a lease between the town as the owner and them as the tenant. And it states in here that BCA will be our, just like we hire Jason to manage the professional building for us, BCA manages the day-to-day stuff, but we are, for the purposes of leases between the town and Breck Film.
So here's my question. When there's an issue, yes, where do we go to resolve it?
You?
First, okay. Somebody complains about something like people do.
They can't get it used, you know, they they want to use the property and and Breck Film won't work with them.
Okay.
I expect BCA to try to mitigate, resolve that, and it always comes back to us at some point, right?
I know, but it's gotta go through through some other channels first to get worked worked out. So, okay.
And do they have any, so like, take the cleaning company, for example, do they have any flexibility as far as who comes in and like that all goes through BCA?
No, I'm, I actually, they want, they want the ability to pick the cleaning company and I put the lease, I put it in here that it's either the town one or there is either the town contract or their choice. Yeah, they've just been working with, you know, people that were in there under the previous one, and they think that maybe they, there's a better avenue for that, but.
Okay, great.
With whatever works, as long as they're taking care of the building.
Yeah.
Be a good deal for them and, you know, kind of good for us. Unlike Kerry Perkins was like, he goes in with the Taliban.
So.
I forgot about that.
Do they like the name Eclipse Theater?
I don't know. Ask Gary tonight. I told him, I know Eric, when we went over, Eric's got issues with it, but but you know, you know Eric.
It definitely needs to be an ER though, because an RE is a group of people. The theater.
There's no ER of Eclipse.
Theaters, theaters, oh, the RE is a group of people.
Argue this point.
You know, on the building, it's one way and on the sign out front, it's a different.
Yeah. And they're two different, they're two different things.
Mine is not that I don't like Eclipse. Mine is that I think the Breck Film Festival needs to be part of it. I think it's very important that the organization that is running this thing needs to stand out as the organization and it should be Breck Film Festival at the Speakeasy Theater. So.
Oh, it's the Speakeasy, right? It's been around.
Yeah.
That's a shame to me that we, that we did what we did and somebody's gonna hold us ransom and wants us to buy it from them.
The sand will never look the same when you remove those letters. It'll always look.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I kind of, I kind of agree with Eric on this one. It's yeah, um, yeah, I, everyone knows who the Speakeasy is and that's kinda yeah, I mean, yeah.
No matter who's owns it or who has the
Mile high.
Still mile high.
Breck Film, I don't think that they go by Breck Film Festival.
Well, just Breck Film, Breck Film.
Breck Film at the Speakeasy Theater.
Yeah, well, you can tell them that.
I'm going to.
You're gonna show Takis, right?
No, it's all silent.
All silent?
All silent. Subtitles, silent, foreign films. A lot of really boring foreign films coming your way.
Are you guys good with everything on here?
We're good.
And that, thanks to Dick and Kelly and Dennis, part of that group that we've been working through this thing. So, and Wendy's been helping. Wendy still gets involved in a lot of stuff.
Uh how about the uh Summit Youth Hockey Facility Lease Ordinance?
Scotty Reed?
Scott Reed?
Wow.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel. You have before you a renewal, a lease renewal for Summit Youth Hockey? They have been renting for the past five years, the multipurpose room, the northern multipurpose room at the Stephen C. West Ice Arena um for their dryland training. And um they are happy in that space. They've, there was pretty quiet for a while in the past year. So we um actually gave them some credit towards this year's rent, if you will. So there's not time sensitive in that matter in terms of them owing us money. So um they are hoping to renew this. This is a um five-year term for the lease has reached its conclusion. The new version that you see for you has an annual automatic lease renewal unless we, you know, decide or they decide they want out of it. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have um about the the um buildings, the first, first reading for this.
This was a Carlton joint originally.
Well, I'll, I'll say as a hockey parent, um we appreciate it. My kids left it there for a month.
Anybody have a problem with this?
No, keep them off the streets.
Thanks, Scott. That's an easy one. Managers report, public projects update. Phelps, was that the first time you heard about COVID testing moving to transit?
No. True. Well, good afternoon, everyone. I thought as part of the special time update that was in the packet, I would just kind of provide a brief update on the water situation um with respect to where we're at with blow and obviously that was a, that was a unknown going into this project. I think it was a little bit of a relief knowing that this, this season wasn't as big as, as it usually is, is where the water was gonna be, but we believe right now in monitoring the water flow that we probably peaked on Sunday.
Oh.
Um and saying that, we, we captured that, captured it at a hundred and eight CFS on the inflow, so we were able to take care of all the water through the outflow works of the dam. And really, the big concern that we had was is that we were gonna, we weren't, that we were gonna need to put water on the RCC for those that remember the tour we had several years ago now, I guess. Um we had a concern with the condition of the RCC. We still do. That's why we're obviously taking it apart. But um at this point, we think even with um unless there's a big weather that we would uh be able to handle all the water. So.
How are the neighbors?
They're, they're just, we still talk to them or I still talk to them.
They're out there every day looking.
No. Actually, one of the properties actually had, is on, one of them, trying to remember. And then the other, the other neighbors, one uh hasn't returned yet for the summer and then one is.
How dry is the tarn right now?
Um well, there's, it's has, it's has all the water in it.
Oh, okay.
To the restricted level, although we did reduce it by about a foot. Yeah, just to be
We like dry as a bone this summer?
Um we're gonna reduce it at the end of uh or July for about a month.
Yeah.
And then to do some of the work and then next year will be the one.
You don't completely drain it this year, do you?
Um pretty close.
Do you? Okay.
To walk around.
Well, that um dry up the river going through, I'd like below the dredge. I know Jackson always worries about the fish.
Now, we'll, we'll still, we're still required to release X amount of water, so we're just gonna be bypassing the water and maintaining a stream flow that will still still allow for that. And then we're also still need to make water, so most of the water that we, what we would be making at Gary Roberts will be released in the river and we'll pick it up kind of on a mountain.
So is the new plant a hundred percent now?
Um it's nearly a hundred percent. When I, the reason I qualify that is because we are having some, some warranty issues with some of the pumps and the motors, but we're, we're, um so we haven't fully signed off on it, but we're working with the vendors to to correct those.
But Gary Roberts is shut down now?
Um yes and no. We've reduced it to, to really about one MGD. You know, kind of keeping that in mind, there's so much bubble gum and duct tape on that, that we don't want to just shutter it. We do keep it working to some extent, but we are anticipating and believing we'll be able to make up all the demand this summer out of the new plant.
Great. Are you happy with the new plant other than the warranty issues?
Yes. Yeah, it's been great. It's been, even with being what it is, we, we, you know, we had a few turbidity issues down where at the intake where we pick up, pick up water, but um other than that, it's been, it's been performing and all the operators are pretty, to have new technology is really
That's great.
Pretty amazing. So, and I'll come back with a water quality report if if council desires, but we have, um you know, just initially, we've, the water quality report and testing that we've done, there's been um fewer DVDs in the water. And for those that remember DVDs, that's a byproduct of water that um basically is left in the pipes. And having the newer plant and the ability to pump it into the tanks on a more frequent and kind of a closer basis than what we do from Gary Roberts, it's um some of the um recordings that we've seen, the DVDs are actually a little bit lower. All right.
Excellent.
This is a wild question, but I keep getting a question about the fish in the tarn and what's gonna happen with them. Can you give me one explanation so I can pass that through?
Um at this time, we don't have any plan to save any of those fish. Um so what we're gonna do when we draw that down, we'll net as many as we can and we'll probably, we'll just have to dispose of them. There's not really a, an opportunity to to fish them out because it's within the contractor's um construction site, so there's not a way to safely allow folks to come in and fish them out because it's under the liability of the general. Yeah.
Infected?
That, yeah, that is true. I'm sorry if I missed the question.
No, this is, this is all good. Go ahead.
Those fish cannot be relocated. That's
What do they have again?
Gill lace.
Gill lace? Oh, that's
I have lots of questions.
Those are really tough to get rid of. Believe me.
Why do they have, why do they have gill lace? Where does that, what is, will all the tarn fish have gill lace?
It's believed that all the fish in the tarn have gill lace.
Just the one that we
Is, is to, to kill the fish or dispose of the fish.
Are we killing all the fish?
We are.
Okay, so maybe the gill lace will go away.
It's a kill.
Yeah, it will go away. And that's, we're working in with a divisional wildlife and uh CDC, TWCB on that.
Wow.
Town party's gonna be a fish fry. I don't know.
I'm gonna do some Googling.
Gill lace fish fry.
So we don't want them. Yep. Appreciate it.
All right. Thanks, James. Any questions on the other public projects, sidewalks, Coin Valley, Alta Verde?
On the Alta Verde, have you moved those barriers yet?
I inspected them and they are per code.
No, but
Anyone getting by them is
When, when can we, when, when will they be gone? When can we go the regular way?
June eighteenth.
Okay.
If they stay on schedule.
Is he the only one that goes through the barriers?
I've heard of.
Sherry took, Kelly took photos and I don't know how I got through there. It was like, it was like Houdini.
Would have seen those barriers.
I don't know what I did.
Shannon will be back up here later. We'll go, we'll do CIP, so.
Thank you. Oh, well, we have parking. How's the garage?
It's fantastic. Photos.
So exciting.
And I believe we're doing a sidewalk next meeting.
Next meeting.
Good.
Cool.
Great job on this.
Any other questions?
Um can I ask about, you have a thought?
Yeah, ask about whatever you want, man.
How, you know, the river park?
Yeah.
That was meandering and now it's, it's straight. Are we working on that? You know what I'm talking about?
Talk about north of Coin Valley?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're in litigation.
Okay.
Well, that's part of CIP, right? That four point five million or whatever.
And the CIP.
Talk about then.
Yeah.
Right.
Uh housing and childcare update. You have a photo for us?
Yeah, we wanna do, uh, I wanna
I know.
Other, other report stuff or you wanna go?
Okay.
Nicole, we're all very sad about
Yeah.
Thank you. I was like, do I need to announce it or not?
I didn't know.
The rest of us have been shedding
Yeah, Carol didn't know.
We told them, we told them we were gonna have a party after you were gone.
Rick's really excited. I'm leaving.
Yeah.
Thank you. I mean, I've, it's honestly been a great, it's like I'm really it's been great working with you guys and like Lori, it's like the most incredible housing mentor there could possibly be. So.
And the chief doesn't know yet that he, that she's leaving, see.
Chief can do that math, buddy.
Yes, but um I'll be working on affordable housing projects in Port Colom, so um really excited for keeping to do the good work in Colorado. You know, it's exciting to take what I've learned here to there and
That's a great progressive town too. They do some cool stuff there.
There's cool stuff going on.
We're expecting some info. Pipeline back.
It's about that. We're just gonna come visit each other.
Their alleyways.
Yeah.
I really did. Um, but yes, so uh just a couple of quick updates. This is my last one. It's so weird. Um, I know I said you have to sit next to me on my last
It's okay.
It reminds me of my first like week here. Except for Rick was at the courthouse with me trying to get a unit foreclosure. That was my first day. So um housing helps and buy downs. So things are actually moving. We have two new applications for housing helps um and two buy downs, one in Silver Shekel, one in Gold Camp. So um just continuing to um process those remaining seven units we have of buy downs. Um right now, we're planning on kind of keeping the units that don't sell to the lead businesses to kind of use as transitional housing until we have some new units up on uh like throughout the Verde and some of our other projects. So I think the committee discussed that today and we like to just keep those units, um whatever's left for whatever period of time makes the most sense. So um that's good. Landing Locals, just a quick update. We talked about it at our committee meeting. Carol and Kelly um met with um one of the two leaders of Landing Locals, Colin, and we got some really good info and we actually brought the county in um to those discussions to start figuring out how do we make a countywide Landing Locals program. And Landing Locals, they really are, they pair um renters with homeowners, homeowners that want to long-term their unit, but don't really know how to find good people or people that meet their perfect need of rent term, rent amount, things like that. So you know, they charge a fee to the owner to kind of place someone in their unit, um but they don't provide any property management service. It's really about pairing people to that program and um the town of Truckee partnered with them. And for um owners that will rent to lower income households below a hundred and fifty percent AMI, um they give a three thousand dollar grant to the owner and then um they also pay a fee to the Landing Locals group. So we're working, we're gonna, yeah, that's pretty cool. And we're, we're working with um Landing Locals on creating a contract for consulting services um to, for him to kind of help us figure out how would we, could we best model, model that program here. It's not gonna be the exact same as Truckee. We have different needs. Um one of those, you know, is that, um, you know, he kind of sees as maybe it's those underperforming short-term rentals essentially or something like that, that we could really target, but his marketing ability is awesome. He used to work for Airbnb, so he kind of knows market. So it's pretty awesome to hear him talk, but I mean, he does a great job and I think he'll be a great partner um in developing that program moving forward. So um continue to work on that. And then um we had a little overview of kind of phase two of McCain today. Norris has done a really good job at creating a, a new vision for this master plan, this development, and I don't know Helen, if you're able to share that spot with Shannon?
So what, uh, yeah.
I'll let Rick take this on.
What I wanna do is get uh get you kind of on board with where we're going. We have to, we gotta kind of move quickly. I thought we, did we don't have the other one?
It's the next page, yeah.
The other one's a little, so basic, basically the front half to the right of that, let me, I see your cursor, please. You can't see on the TVs, right? Only the big screen. Where am I pointing?
The name of that company from Truckee is what?
Landing Locals.
Landing Locals.
You can go to landinglocals.com. Yeah, it's, it's kind of, it's
Here, this is, this is all Alta Verde, right? Okay, this is Alta Verde that we are under construction and started. You're gonna do the groundbreaking July thirteenth?
July thirteenth.
Yeah. All right. So this area right here, this is the pond. We can't do anything in this pond area here that has to be filled in. This is the area, these kind of purplish buildings would be the, what we're kind of earmarking for the nonprofit campus. So you know, you come in here, Stan Miller Drive, right? Then you have the non-pro, the, each one of these sites is seventy-five hundred square feet. And if you go two-story, then you're looking at fifteen thousand. So that's potentially programmed right now with three buildings, you could have forty-five thousand. That's a lot, a lot, and none. So, and it's three point eight acres, I think. And this is where we're proposing some shared parking along here in this area between housing and along this area right here, right now, would be some shared parking with the nonprofit center and what we need. We're showing two hundred units of housing, which equals, can anybody read the, wasn't it, how many bedrooms? So two hundred units of housing, this, the, this building along the north corner is two-story. This building on the east edge is two-story. This building south edge is two-story. The two middle buildings are three-story. So it steps up a little as you go back, but it still creates a little more of that view corridor through here, but it's so, we're hoping that this compromise of a couple, three stories, this allows us to hit that two hundred unit mark that we were striving for in new house, in uh new units. How many beds? Four hundred and six beds. That's good in here.
How many, how many um units or beds does the third story satisfy? Third story.
Can you read, I, what number those are?
Those tiny little numbers?
Are you trying to see what they're adding by those three stories or? Two middle ones right here, yeah.
I don't know.
Lindsay was gonna be on and she's not dialed in. Eric, I, I think we're adding, you know, twenty
I mean, here's my, I guess here's my soapbox. If we're adding twenty or so units, is there anywhere else on site that we can just either add on to these buildings lengthwise or you know, any, anywhere else in, in this area that we can just add?
Approximately seventeen units per story. So you're losing, if you take, if you, if you took two stories out, you're losing thirty-four units.
Yeah, no, they had a hard time fitting this much in and the parking and everything else.
Fan of three stories. That's the only reason I just don't
Why we've stepped it down on both sides in the front.
And what is the part?
Big three-story buildings though in the middle.
Eric, what, what is it that you don't like about the third story?
They're just too tall. I mean, for our little, you know, I just don't think it's three-story buildings. I mean, Alta Verde is tiny compared to this. These are monstrous buildings then that are gonna go up right next to Alta Verde and that's These are monstrous buildings then that are going to go up right next to Alta Verde and that's their view corridor. You're not going to, I mean, they're, the, they're probably going with the two-story anyway. I just think three-story, I just don't like three-story buildings, especially for residential like this and never have.
Even in that location or especially in that location.
And this is where we gotta figure out where we're going because every week we lose, it, I mean, we want to be in the ground next year, this time next year, starting to build. And so we have this calendar. We have to, the, the, there's pros and cons. This is a two hundred unit proposal. Obviously, from Eric's perspective, one con is we have two buildings that are three-story. Another con is it's hard for us to offset net zero on two hundred units when we're, because we, we don't have enough roof space and other space for solar. If we lost, now if we lost thirty-four units, we're losing housing. Uh, we would go to two stories and we probably would be closer to hitting that zero because we have less units we have to offset. But we're losing needed housing and, you know, in town, too, so.
What is the parking ratio?
Well, it's, I mean, it's, what is it? One for something? Yeah, but we're, right now, we're meeting parking with what we have. We studied layout at two stories and we lose about forty units, Lindsey's saying.
Doesn't that seem like a lot of parking? Two per bedroom? Because you'll have.
It's not two per bedroom.
Oh, two per unit, okay.
What, what's the, can you explain the whole, what's going on with the pond? We gotta fill it.
Uh, two acres.
What's going to happen to that?
You, we fill it, but in order for us to fill it to where you could build on it would cost us a few million?
What about per parking?
Well, the same thing. You can't park on it for a few years until it settles and compacts away. Otherwise, you're going to end up with a parking lot like this.
SUVs.
How many sing, how many single, I'm just sorry, I'm still on the park. How many single units are there? How many one-bedroom studio?
There are forty-one beds. There are fifty-four two-beds. And I can't read the three-bed one, but.
Forty-six.
Can, can we, can she, oh, she's not dialed in. Can we bring her over from the panel? Yeah, we'll bring Lindsay over. She's going to answer some.
She said she can't unmute. Forty, forty-one one-bedrooms and no studios. There's ten studios.
Ten studios.
Is there any way we could see a rendering?
Well, they haven't gotten that far because we need to, we don't want them to do renderings until we know what we're, uh, and what it's gonna.
I appreciate Eric's thoughts and I really do. We've got to be careful of this stuff, but I, I just think we need the housing so badly and this, this is a great location for it.
Well, that, I'm not actually saying getting rid of the forty units, but I find it hard to believe there's no other place on this, on this site, including both sites. You know, we got a huge shared parking area that we're going to have out there. I mean, there's no other configuration of these that we can't get.
Challenged them.
Well, I want to, let's ask Lindsay if we, are we meeting require, parking by, by doing shared already? Or do we have an opportunity to do, lose more parking, Lindsay?
We're, we're using the shared parking. So we're currently providing three hundred and thirty-eight parking spaces within the proposed residential land use bubble. And we're proposing eighty for the nonprofit. Now, the eighty, the nonprofits required about sixty-three or so. Um, total, so that one's slightly overparked. And then additionally, we were looking at shared spaces around seventy-five percent of the total. So we're using sixty of those spaces and the eighty to get to the three ninety-eight to meet code, which shakes out to two spaces per unit if we want to just, you know, keep it simple.
And the one area that we could still, I mean, we, you know, we had that one kind of linear, uh, shared parking area on the nor, very north end there. That was going to be with the, right there, our cursor's on. That's still some, that, there's some opportunity there potentially. I mean, we'd lose parking, but we would have to look at what our parking thing is.
Yeah.
Another idea we came up with that I don't know and how doable it is, but its potential is that we could, we, we could approach the school district about, so we basically gave them that ten acres, right? But if we could move, if we could move that ten acres, a hundred to a hundred and fifty feet to the south, then we've given ourselves the ability to add on to that solar garden and, and meet our solar needs to go net zero. And potentially even push that, another building or push the housing a little to this, just the south edge of that by gaining another hundred feet. Right? I mean, really, does that ten acres matter if it's there or if it's a hundred feet further south? But that would involve creating a replat and a land swap and everything.
We need to put elevators in.
Think so, Lindsay? I don't think so. Two-story and one three-story building?
I don't think so. In the past, for fair housing, um, you know, there's innate, and I know that Gorman can speak better to this. But I believe that you could do, hold on a second. No elevators, he says. So I've got the architect saying that. I think you can do ADA units on the first floor.
Lindsay, do you know what Gold Camp looks like? Have you, you know what, have you ever been up there?
I've been up there a long time ago.
P-K Village?
It's been a long time.
Have you, have you seen it look like Gold Camp?
Hopefully not.
No, I'm not. I'm talking about the.
I mean, little update. Those, those are sort of more rectangular, square buildings.
I mean, Gorman, remember that Gorman's going to build this and operate it and we're.
They're going to look more like Alta Verde.
Yeah, it's going to look like, you know, Wintergreen, what they did, Wintergreen, three-story.
Right, right.
Yep.
Do you think we could get an answer from the school district quickly or would that take some time and delay the project?
It's going to take some time.
That's the problem.
And we could get it done if we knew it was going to happen. We'd have time to do it, but, um, I don't think they would care. Just logistically, I briefly talked to Tim about it. It, I mean, they own the land now, so it's their land, but.
On my discontent with three stories, just be out there. I don't know if anybody else feels that way, so.
Eric, I appreciate what you're saying too, but I, with the step up and in that location, I don't have a problem with three stories there.
There, those buildings are not stepped up. Those buildings are three-story buildings.
No, I'm talking about on the each end of that, it's mirrored by two stories.
I know, but.
It steps up in the middle.
Step up to me is when the building itself steps up from two-story to three-story, which is what we require when we talk about step ups or, or step downs on buildings when you get a points for, for roof massing. It's going to be big three-story building. They're big buildings. I don't like housing at all costs. I know we're in a housing crisis. I do not like housing at all costs. And for me, three stories is an all-cost. We just want to shove, I mean, seriously, why don't we make them all three stories then? Because you're not doing anything by, there, there's no architectural thing that's making the buildings on the, on either end that are not connected to the three-story buildings. Any reason they should be two-story? They should all be three-story then. If, 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 if we're talking about, if this is just to get, uh, the most housing you can get, they should all be three-story. That's what I don't like about these buildings in the middle. They're not stepped buildings. And you don't, stepping in, in a development itself, to me, is not stepping. The building itself has to step.
Well, for me, I mean, like, I look at where Alta Verde is. I would not want that building to be three stories next to Alta Verde. So it, it, from, from the perspective of the site plan and going from Alta Verde, it is stepped because you're going to look over the two-story and see a three-story at the top of the three stories. So, I mean, I appreciate what you're saying, Eric, and I'm not a, all, you know, all-in, you know, bar all, you know, quality just to get housing. But I, I think this is a good compromise.
I'm with Dick. I think, um, the building's not stepped up, but as a whole, it is where we don't have that three-story building right next to Alta Verde. Where that is, is somewhat against a hillside. So the visual impact from Highway nine, I don't think is quite as much. And we do need housing. It's not housing at all cost. In this situation, an extra, what, thirty-four units for those two buildings, three stories, I support that.
I don't want to lose the third, I don't want to lose those thirty-four units. Um, I do see where Eric is coming from, you know, especially, you know, looking at the Breckenridge character. Um, I, I do think we need to talk more about parking at some point. I don't understand all the numbers that are, that are there right now. But I do think that for, saying that fifty-one one-bedroom and studio units needs two cars. I, that's assuming that you have two people living in all of those units and I, I just don't think that's the case. And I think the benefit here with the shared parking is that, you know, sure, people might be working from home, so they won't be moving their car. But if you're, if we're worried about visitor parking, well, they can use the nonprofit buildings for sure because visitors come at night. Um, so I, I do think that we could use that to our advantage. I, I'm just not sold that we need that much parking because we have that advantage with the site of nighttime, like visitors could use the nonprofit parking. So I, I am curious if there's some kind of a creative solution with, with parking, but I don't, I don't feel like I know enough of, about these numbers.
Talk something about that and we were going to look into where we charged for the second parking spaces, you know, effective that was. Was that, is that, you know, so we're, we're kind of looking at it because I, I brought that up, too. I, I'm a proponent that we need to start charging for the second parking spot on our workforce housing because I, I just, I, I think a lot of our workforce could come without cars if enticed.
Yeah, and, and I go back and forth on that, too, but I, I agree with the right motivation or whatever, like that's, again, that's our goal to have fewer cars. And so, um, and ideally, if they're parked, then they're not really a problem per se. But yeah, I, I think that there's, there's some things that, I feel like there's some things that we can think about there.
We, uh.
But I, I know you want a quick turnaround, so I guess I'm, I'm in support, but I do feel like they're.
I love it when everybody was a hundred percent support, which is always my goal, but it's not. Would you feel better, let me ask you this, would you feel better if we did a true step up on every building? So you could still keep the same number of units?
No.
I didn't know if that would change the look of that.
No.
The building more. Okay, just trying.
I'm not going to, look, I'm not going to say no to the project. I mean, if, if the council, I'm not.
I know.
You know what I mean? I mean, I don't like it, but we need, we need the housing, so.
Still show up for the groundbreaking?
I don't know, maybe. Are you going to filibuster?
I'll pick him up, Rick. Don't worry about it.
I know, it's not like that. I just.
But I see what you're saying, like sticking to, you know, what we do everywhere else and.
Or that.
I mean.
Yeah, well, well, Lindsay will look at it still on that, but I, I just don't know where else we would.
Yeah.
Units.
You know, I, I wish we could, I mean, I guess we could pull it up and show you how it looked previously, but we do lose with, from our study, forty units. So that's sort of the.
Here's the other part. We have to get to a spot where we're telling the nonprofit, this is what you have to work with. It's not changing because we can't expand. We can't go anywhere else. You know, we do have, yeah, we got, we do have to do.
Nonprofits, one story or two?
They could be two. They probably be two.
I guess that's another question, too. Where are we with the nonprofits? I mean, did we promise all of this land? Is this, what's, what's the deal there?
There's a potential that they may not need it.
Buildings?
They don't know that yet because they're in the early stages of bringing those people and those groups together to, to assess the need. And, I mean, what they're hearing from like Hi, HC3, that this is a viable place for them when they've looked. So you've got FERC, you've got something with the Care Clinic, you've got, uh, Building Hope, you've got HC3. We know we got Mountain Top that's expressing. There's been a lot of, I mean, and there's still NRO looking for some housing option out here that I don't know where that ever, if the, the model is even doable, but, um, so.
Great project. Fully supported.
Alright.
Yeah.
Why, again, are we, why do we have to fill that pond?
Floodplain. Um, there, this is basically all a weird floodplain area. So, um, as a part of Alta Verde, we have to get a letter of map revision and to get that from FEMA, we have to fill the dredge pond.
Thank you.
Yeah. We looked at the feasibility of moving the solar garden over and putting it on top of the.
Of the fill?
Of the fill, uh, but just logistically, we don't own all those panels and interruptions and contractual stuff and the cost of moving it just doesn't make it feasible.
Will, will that be usable once, once it's filled and settled and?
Solar on it?
Fifteen, twenty years?
You wanted, I mean, we could put more solar on it sooner, right? We could lay the, I thought we could do some footings or. Yeah, I don't either.
I saw the fish have gill eyes in that.
Do not Google gill eyes.
Do you pull into there and you just, there and it's solar, but, because the green space will look nice in there as you, you know, there's going to be a lot of activity winter on.
There has to be some green space there for the. At least half of that is detention.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah.
It's not pretty.
But we can move forward and have Lindsay and the team start doing serious.
To mock up, right?
Yeah.
So we'll show you.
Oh, yeah.
Awesome.
Thank you. Thanks, Lindsay.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Lindsay. Nicole, thank you.
You guys, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Good luck.
Break. I'm still going to harass.
Oh, good, good.
They're going to talk to you.
Uh, events committee. Is that next? What? What? What are we doing?
Going online.
Oh.
Oh, committee reports. There's nothing on committee reports.
Okay.
I mean, unless somebody has something. It was a blank page, so.
So.
Events committee?
Um, so there's nothing of note besides what is in the minutes unless Carol has anything.
I think it summed up well and looking like it's going to be a full Fourth of July. And thanks to the BTO team, they did an incredible job putting that together with not a ton of time.
About the Fourth of July, I saw that, um, Breckenridge is hosting the only parade in Summit County. Are other communities doing other events at the same time? Yes. So now we think the first, that Frisco's going to do a bike parade. Okay. Um, and I think that, that will start at ten. And there are other events around the county. There's an NRO concert in Silverthorn, and I don't remember the timing on that, but there are other events happening around the county. There is a very good possibility that we will get a large number of people here for the parade. Yeah. Which will also be, um, programmed virtually, so people who don't feel comfortable at the parade in person can still watch it. Um, so we have a meeting on Monday with Casey and Transit and Parking to talk about, um, a plan. Okay, what time is it? I'm sorry. I know I should know this. What time is our parade? Nine-thirty. Okay, so you, they would be, they would be choosing one or the other.
That earlier than normal?
The bike parade. So the nine-thirty is the kickoff of the firecracker, but Casey's really working hard this year to make it a seamless transition from the finish of the last wave of the firecracker right into the parade instead of having a gap in between. So truly, the firecracker is intended to lead off the parade and be the first kind of thing you see as part of that. And what time is the NRO concert? Uh, six. The NRO concert here is. No, on the other side of the counter. I'm just curious about. I don't remember. I'd have to look. Okay, because it's, that's a lot. I think there's other things happening at Keystone as well. Alright, yeah, I just want to make sure that. Thank you for talking about it. I'm sure it's in good hands. It's just, it's a little concerning. People will have a hard time, I think, getting, if, if they wanted to hop around the county, I think they're going to have a hard time doing that. Yeah. Timely fashion. Yeah, and it would, it just would be great to spread the crowds, you know, around the county and have different things going on at the same time instead of, right? Like, we had that issue with the snow sculptures a couple of years ago. Yep. And so, yeah, we just want to, I know you're on it, just. It, it still may be. Yeah. Problematic. Okay. Right? I think we're still going to have traffic congestion issues, but we will try to mitigate those as best we can with messaging and. Yeah. VMS and if we can get extra transit, you know, we'll, we'll do our best to try to manage it. Thank you. Thanks so much.
Any other questions on events?
No, but it's really great to see all these, the last event page of everything going on. It's really nice to see how, all the liveliness coming back. It's great.
Animations.
Animation.
Called animation.
Yeah, thanks, Jeffrey.
Announcing on the side of the road again?
I I am. I, yep, we're negotiating.
That's an event that should go away.
No, no, it's my capitalistic.
Was paid for that? I mean, you get paid for that.
Yeah.
Surprising, isn't it? All right, council goals.
You guys remember Haley?
I know.
Hey.
In the physical form. Um, hello, Mayor and Council. You guys have already um seen the memo and the documents. So I'm just here for thoughts, suggestions, ideas.
I.
Feel about it.
We're really pleased and excited with Haley, Haley, Haley's creativity and this. And I think it's some great way to put our goals a little more front and center.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I I we're really supportive of what she's laid out here to include a new picture involving all seven of you.
Yes, we will see that.
This looks a little bit frightening.
Well, there's what, you know, Pro Tem's missing.
I know. There in a lot of, yeah, that's that's gonna.
I thought I keep using that photo of Aaron and Jeffrey, so I thought this would be some like parody between the two. Um, but I I have reached out to Joe Cosimoto, who's took the photos previously. And if it works for you all, he would come to the first meeting in July.
Great.
And get all new group photos and you guys talking and looking, I don't know. Important.
We tossed.
Oh, yeah.
Off the website.
Yeah, that's right.
So I think all this looks really great. Thanks for putting it together. I think it's a great idea to amplify those partner kind of wins between organizations, individuals, businesses. On the social press campaign, I'm wondering, is that just gonna be a celebration? Or is there also gonna be that educational push to let residents and visitors know how they can further contribute to these goals?
Educational push so that people, um, you know, are not only aware of what's going on, but how they also can contribute.
That's great.
I love our goals. Um, I think they're great.
All right.
Well, aside from the less cars.
Yeah, fewer cars.
I know. Uh, but I noticed, like, social equity is like the last bullet. And I know that this will take some time, but I would love to see that elevated somehow. And I know that there was so much work that went into our goals.
Right.
But at some point, I would love for social equity to be part, to to be elevated, I think, in our. So it's not just like a flash in the pan.
Right, and I think that ties also into it being not even necessarily a part of the goals, but the lens through which all the goals are achieved and viewed.
Yeah, like how, and I know I've said it before, but how our fourth goal is establish Breckenridge at the leading edge in mountain environment stewardship and sustainable practices. I would love for um social equity to be.
Hmm.
A similar lens.
Yeah.
I have a but.
Yes.
Oh.
I love the way that it's all put together with um the thought process, the partnership. I don't like the name council goals.
Yeah.
I think it should be all inclusive of town goals.
Community goals.
Community goals.
Yeah.
Um, and that was the only thing that I noticed after after reading it, and it it really sounds great.
Hmm.
But council goal sounds like it's only our goals.
Right.
I want it to be our goals.
We could say community goals council is working on.
It's just, it's just an idea.
This is. We're developed with the community.
They were, yeah.
In partnership with the community with, you know, BTO, very intensive process, which we want to continue to remind people when they accuse you of going off the rails, you know, and doing stuff.
Yeah.
Um.
I just like it to be more reflective of our community.
Yeah.
I think that's a great idea.
Agreed. Yeah, that's definitely why I included it in in that, you know, including businesses who are working on this, including organizations. So that, you know, it's also not entirely on you all to fulfill these goals because I don't think we'll ever fully get there without, you know, community in involvement, even in solutions and so. Oh, y'all, I was trying to refrain from saying y'all, but it is the most gender inclusive, in case you guys are curious.
Well, yeah.
Y'all.
I mean, the, one of the issues is with the code, right? Because they get points, people, there, we have code in the, for things tied to council goals.
Why don't we call it community and council goals?
Yeah.
Something like that, man. Um. So I don't know how to handle this.
Hmm.
It's a lot of words.
Yes.
Which is great to sit down and read, but you know how.
Yeah.
I thought if it in s- in, just in the first section, so in more boots and bikes, fewer cars. Um, you could just maybe bold some of the words, so people could just sort of just just grab some of the pieces out of it without reading the whole thing.
Right.
Since nobody can think for longer than fifteen seconds anymore. Um, it would, I think, I don't know. I don't know how you feel about it, but that's the only thing. I I think it's great. I I really, I I would just like to have some really easy to grasp things for people when they just scan it to.
Right. Yeah, we can definitely do that. We could also distill it, do that and distill it into a one cheater.
That'd be cool.
And then also distill it into some more like social media slideshow stuff that outlines that kind of stuff.
I think it's awesome, though.
Yeah, it's a nice document.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's good. Well, thank you.
I see the page where it says how good the mayor protest.
Yes.
Do that.
Uh, I know that picture is frightening with the people in the mask on at that. I just.
That's not on the photo?
Ew.
Oh, you do. Yeah, I was trying to highlight.
We only need five people on council.
Yeah.
Ouch. Two people sitting next to you are omitting.
Yeah.
Like, anything else?
No, I like.
Great.
I do do agree, some highlight kind of to kind of to appeal to the short attention span people out there, but yeah.
Awesome. Thank you.
Cool.
All right. I think I have a new picture here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, Dave De Peters texted me and said that the NRO concert is at ten, so that's also competing, not competing in a good way.
He operates usually later, right?
Hmm.
I don't know, parade's like usually eleven or something.
That's why everybody should go.
Uh, ready to do the housing?
Housing, uh, block eleven workforce housing town project.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Luke Sponable, planner two with the block eleven net zero apartments. I have a short presentation ready for the meeting this evening, but in the meantime, I'm happy to take any questions.
Anybody, anybody? Lori answered mine.
And I had a, so why are, why are the parking ratios so high?
It's a, I need a few questions, please. One bedroom units and the parking ratio per bed um is really probably what counts in the long run.
Hmm.
Um, but you know, given the site plan, um, you know, we have the um head-in parking on the south side. We don't know what development's gonna occur to the south of that, so we are overparked. We can have some shared parking arrangement. And since we own the property, we can manage the parking however we see fit. But it didn't make sense to put sort of parallel parking there and lose spots and it'd be less efficient. Um, so we just ended up gaining some spots by doing the head-in and give us flexibility to look at what happens to the south.
Okay, yeah, but.
Those are, I mean, we're gonna manage two of those buildings as, you know, town employees, which is a somewhat transitional, although they can be in there currently for up to two years. You know, we're we're finding that like Blue Fifty-two, even though that was part of the code, there's still issues, right? I mean, we still have, people have two vehicles and a work car or something, you know, and they. I mean, these are working families and different things and guest parking and there's still some challenges. So every site is a little different on what they need.
And Coto is the most, obviously, that's the best thing to compare it to.
Yeah.
And we're part of Coto one point nine per bedroom, and that seems to be just right at Coto. I mean, initially, we were getting a lot of complaints about Dakota residents taking Blue Two parking.
Yeah.
Something, but that's at one point nine per bedroom and seems to be right. Um, we're gonna be slightly over that with the second phase, but like I said, we could have it for shared for something to the south, or we can manage it differently.
Okay.
We know who's building this yet?
Um, yeah, um, we are, hope to have a contract with Summit Home soon.
Excellent. And how long?
Um, well, I'm thinking within the next couple of weeks at the most.
How long, I'm sorry.
Oh, the construction.
Can move in.
Oh, it's a, it's a twelve-month build or ten to twelve-month build.
And we're thinking about breaking ground.
We won't have permits, you know, we get through entitlements at tonight. Um, it'll pay, we've counted in our schedule two or three months for permits. We go vertical in August-ish.
Okay.
And what are the?
What it is.
What are the AMIs again?
Uh, we own these and we manage these, and I think we'll set the rents similar to Coto, which is.
Thousand dollars for, thousand and eleven hundred for one bedroom, eleven hundred. That's what we charge the employees.
Yeah.
All right.
Part of the challenge is you make them too cheap. It's already hard to get them out, and when you make it too cheap, they, you'll never, because they don't.
Never find.
I mean, we've talked about escalating it over time because they gotta get them used to the real world a little bit.
Yeah.
You know? But.
Like your teenagers.
It's great exciting. We can't wait to get this built and open the doors because we need these units desperately, so.
But we want, you know, we're, we're gonna try to have housing type. You know, Eric somewhat jokingly always says we go from one crisis to the next, and we get COVID updates at every meeting. And we're, we have a lot of irons in the fire. We'd be trying to talk something with housing at every meeting to keep things moving along, so.
Great.
This is awesome.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, capital improvements. What's that? Country road?
Yes. I think Laurie's gonna.
Hi again.
Oh.
Get, I presented the five-year plan on the table in draft form to highlight changes that are proposed by staff for discussion as well as any other projects council wishes to discuss or add to the CIP. I tried to highlight all the changes um and highlighted those in the table as well. I'm not sure if you want me to spend the time to go through each project in the table or if you want to jump to just the discussion items.
Yeah, let's just jump to the discussion items.
Okay.
Assuming everybody read through this, so.
Starting in the table, the first one is McCain Property Improvements, the access road that goes from Stan Miller Drive out to Coin is now what we've budgeted. This road is the access for that new housing development that Nicole and Laurie showed you. And we're showing it being construction twenty twenty-four. So we've doubled the budget that was previously shown because we were only going to the school district parcel prior.
We got, we have to make sure people can get out both ways.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it's just gonna bottleneck at the water plant.
Three hundred units of housing and other stuff, and plus you got the, you know, rec market going in and all this stuff, but no.
You know, it's gotta, gotta be done.
And we're thinking it needs to be designed sort of more residential roads and traffic calming, perhaps that sort of thing, rather than just more of an industrial road as we pictured earlier.
Yeah.
So that was a big increase there.
That driving the cost. Or rip.
Oh, I don't think so. This is, you know, a ballpark. We haven't completed the designer price date yet. So I'm hoping the cost can come down.
And that's just road, no sidewalks?
It's road and sidewalks.
Good, great.
Maybe.
Does, we haven't quite figured out what we're gonna do.
Shannon's gonna, Shannon's gonna put a higher number so that you're not surprised later. The hope is that, um, you know, we get these things down, but we should rather not say five million and then come back and tell you eight later.
True, and I think the road section, Rick, to answer the sidewalk question, depends on what we're gonna do with the rec path.
Thank you, rec path.
And whether we want bikes to be able to go down this road also, if we're gonna consider the school district and sidewalks and all that sort of stuff. So I think there's a lot of design still to do on this, but the big budget dump is to bring all the way to Coin. Is what the major changes.
Everybody feel good about going all the way to Coin?
Well, I think we need to.
Yeah. Okay.
A next one is fiber. We hadn't had any budget in for fiber for a couple of years. This is an unspecified project, but we're finding that we could be eligible for more grants. So we want to have some seed money in there to develop projects to match those grants. Is that a comfortable number?
Yeah, I think so. I mean.
Let you know when we see the total, but yeah.
Um.
Get the total.
Yeah.
The next one is a new project proposed by public work staff. The backside of the Broken Lance Loop has a lot of groundwater issues that caused the pavement to be in pretty poor condition. This has been ongoing for decades.
West side?
Kind of where that private road development is, it kind, it just gushes out of. And comes up. So this is to do a design and repair of that, probably some sort of underdrain system. Next one, I increased for your consideration the budget for overlay. We hired a consultant to do a drive-through town, and while they said we are doing a great job compared to other mountain communities, in order to keep us up above that seven mark, we want to start paving a bit more over the next few years.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah. Did we say no to any of these?
We haven't yet.
The roads are what we.
I know, we do, I know.
And you know, I don't want to say no.
She hates roads.
This seems really easy so far to just say yes.
I want to add one under public work.
This is the one you can send my ticket with, like.
That's that one? Yep.
So when we built the Public Works admin building, it was built and it was designed and built to pop the top and add a second level to it. We think that we should go spend, we think we should spend some money and and actually design and come up with a plan of what that would take to do that, to so that we're eligible to put in for some transit grant stuff. Uh, that we're seeing a lot of money out there for, you know, because as we create this mobility department and all this stuff, we don't have a place for these people. And uh, I don't know what it would take to study that. Uh, it might be who best even do it sooner than when you try to do it this year, because there's so many grants.
I think we should do it right away. I mean, the grand money's out there. We need to.
I know.
Get as much as we can before it dries up.
See, it's.
It's not gonna last.
When you, you know, when you, like, when when we were at Summit Stage doing that volunteer, I mean, that whole area was all, is all Summit Stage been developed through grants.
Do they give grants for rooftop bars?
No.
Okay, just checking.
So we'll get, we'll get a number.
Let you know, but we may look at doing that this year just to get, get, I don't know what level we, but we have to have something that we can put in a grant that shows this is what it is, this is what it would cost.
Right, Dave? We're even. We're gonna have to build this eventually. We might as well do it as soon as we can with money that we can get from the feds.
Who designed that?
That stays.
Stays? Oh, that's.
So we can talk to them and see what a price it'd be and do it as a.
We will, maybe we'll leave it off of here, because we'll do it as a supplemental for this year.
I'd say get it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm supportive of that for sure.
That's not on here.
What?
No, under renewable energy, I was speaking with Jesse Burley, and we would like to put an additional seventy-five thousand dollars in for EV chargers for grant matching. We did that this year, but I neglected to add it in for twenty twenty-two.
Yes.
Okay. Then we jumped down to parking and transportation. Uh, we have increased the estimate for the Watson Roundabout.
Yeah.
Prices are escalating and we're doing a bit more work than initially anticipated. We'll be able to narrow that down when we go to bid at this fall, so we'll have a better idea.
Can't say no to this one. No, we're on the hook for a roundabout here, so there's no.
It's kind of like the one up above that, the Blue River rehabilitation.
Gotta be done.
Either, yeah. Win or lose on this one.
You should know more by the time the budget is adopted, whether there's any other.
We have mediation scheduled for August.
Hmm. Yeah, August sixteen or nineteen.
We'll know.
Uh, trials December.
Okay. Under Watson Roundabout is the Riverwalk project. So this was initially to do the pedestrian connections from South Gondola over to downtown. So that was gonna be from more North French to Ski Hill. We've now expanded that scope to start looking at Ski Hill South to Park. So that five hundred thousand in twenty twenty-two would be to finish up design documents and then I just did placeholders for the funding for construction. We really don't know what that's gonna cost yet. Despite what Rick says, I think those numbers are really low for the placeholders depending on how quickly we want to construct that. And. Our next new addition is not a new, but it's a re-edition is the sidewalk on Broken Lance from where it ends extended out to the transit stop that Kelly asked, that we definitely bring back in for twenty twenty-two.
Yep.
Yes.
That. That's all I had for highlighted changes. I'm happy to discuss anything else on there or any projects council wishes to add at this time to the five-year. We will bring this back in the fall during budget season, but this was just a preview to start these discussions.
It's good to do it this way. That way we're not so shocked in the fall.
I'm gonna forget you saw this.
Oh, no kidding.
By tonight, after the first bourbon. You, anything else?
Asphalt evaluation, do they take a look at more than that culverts? Like, do they look at our roadways and let us know what we need to get ahead of or plan for?
We just engaged them to do the asphalt. I do have a project on their infrastructure improvements culverts. It's the last one under Public Works. And I have a consulting firm that is systematically looking at culverts for replacement. We're looking at the two in Warriors Mark right now. And, um, once we get that designed, we're maybe pursuing some infrastructure grants if that comes down from the federal level or I'll probably come with a construction budget in a couple of years to replace those.
Yeah, I mean, there's other capital, um, obviously there's a lot of there's wider capital that isn't shown in here and that comes out when you do the budget and then there's a lot of housing capital that we've been talking about that's, you know, all different projects that we still have to have very much have our hand in and Shannon's team is involved in a lot of the planning that goes on early on in every housing project that we do in there and we're looking, you know, we're kind of relooking at some capital expenses related to recreation with our tennis courts. Uh, but we're not gonna show those here. We're gonna show, I think our plan is to start getting those into our facilities funds, knowing that those are ongoing costs to replace and keep those tennis courts up that, uh, we're, uh, we're getting cost estimates now. And we have one tennis court, is it one or in part two of Carter Park that will be inoperable? And I, this summer, and we'll have to decide if it's worth repli, total replacing them or if we hear a lot of gripes that they weren't there from people, you know, and those clay courts are gonna need some work, so. There'll be some additional expense showing up in the recreation budget for twenty-two related to those types of things. But we don't think that we decided not to put it on this, because those are. But there's lots of, my point is there's lots of other capital things happening in town besides just what you're gonna see on here.
Those pickleball players are very vocal.
Ask Scott Reed about that. Well, really.
A pickleball or a tennis?
People don't like.
It's more the pickleball people, I'm sure that are.
Pickleball people.
Yeah.
Those actually.
Pickleball people like the berms. What, the Carter Park ones?
They are nice, yeah.
All right, anything else for Shannon?
No new projects.
Thank you.
No new projects.
Yeah.
There's a lot of stuff in there. We have other stuff going on that we need to finish first.
We're showing some this, this plan after this last year.
Riverwalk restaurants. About that. Spent in the Riverwalk.
It's just the person who wanted him moved up to the county commission.
Oh yeah, we haven't had to talk about that for a while.
I think it's good to have indoor plumbing. I just call me old fashioned.
Oh, listen, this is a mining town. We don't believe.
Yeah, you're from the Hampshire like this.
Yep.
All right, we're gonna see you twice.
Yeah.
Wear a lot of hats tonight, bud.
Little Jimmy Phelps.
The boys.
Now he could joke about it. We had counseling for him, but we.
I'm still in counseling, but that's.
So hopefully everyone had a chance to read Jennifer's summaries that she put in. And so really what I wanna kind of take any questions that anyone has, but we've been very successful in getting grants over the, over the years. That's a big component for our system, obviously. Going, dating all the way back to even some of the infrastructure on, on Public Works yard, that garage was grant funding way back in two thousand four or five, I believe. But the thing that, um, these recent, you know, the COVID acts and the kind of the CARES funding and the Chrisa funding as part of that, um, some of that federal assistance, really that, those dollars are allocated for labor or wages and operating expenses. So one of the questions that I've been discussing with both Rick and Shannon is what, how this is gonna have impacts to the transit budget. You know, not only count this next calendar year or this calendar year we're in, but next year. And one of the things that we'll be coming back to as part of developing the budget year for twenty-two is we will be making a recommendation to Rick and Shannon to allocate approximately a million dollars of this Chrisa funding into the capital, um, fund for, for Public Works. And specifically to help do the cost match for the buses that we're gonna be getting as part of this outline in the garage fund, yeah. As part of this, um, um, grant funding story has gone, we've been successful in getting, we'll get four more electric buses over the next two years. So three buses next year, twenty-two, and then one bus in twenty-three. But as part of that, there's a match and one of those buses actually has a fifty percent match, the one that'll become in twenty-three and the other two have twenty percent matches. So some of those items or those matches with also the chargers come in around about a million dollars. So what I'd like to recommend as part of next year's budget is that we reallocate what would have come from the garage or from the general fund. We, we can go ahead and put that towards the, into the garage fund, so.
Yep, yeah. That makes sense.
Allows you to get those. I mean, that's a high priority, get those electric buses and not have to transfer more money out of them.
Yeah, no, that's a great idea.
Yeah.
And then, you know, we, the details are not known yet for the, um, ARPA funds that, that, uh, President Biden signed in this year. So there's a lot of, a lot of discussion, not only transit, but fiber, water projects. So we're kind of keeping our eyes and ears open for, for any possibilities there as well.
Awesome.
All right.
Possible, thank you.
Are you done?
Yeah.
One of my manager update items that I was gonna do for you is just to talk about staffing a little bit. One of our issues where we're still down considerably, seven plus positions is in our parks department. And so there'll be some impacts from that. Just so you know, as we're going into summer, things that, I mean, we've gotta figure out how we're gonna do noxious weeds. You know, we don't have somebody dedicated out there doing that like we've done in the past and you know, we're looking to see if there's the ability to contract with somebody to do that, but they're busy too. So um, those are the types of things that, you know, James is working through. Some of our, obviously our critical, what I call kind of critical services of getting our flowers planted and those types of things that are so visible to our community are still gonna happen and that generally happens closer to the end of June so that we don't have frost kill and that before Fourth of July. So we're still on schedule with that.
Yeah, we are. That, that is scheduled for the Monday that week after Father's Day then. So I think the week of the twenty.
We're actually in our greenhouse now.
Yep, we're just hardening.
Except for the median stuff, which will still, median happens around that same time or when?
Though, the plan is right now, we'll get the installation of all that before the fourth. It might go right up to the seventh hour of that weekend, but the plan is to get it on the ground. But as Rick mentioned, we, we are short nearly ten position and ten positions in parks, you know, so that's, that's four hundred hours a week, um, of what you would see out there of maintaining, you know, trash walks or trash cans or mowing some of the areas or, um, all the little detail stuff is gonna be a little bit, you know, right now we're doing everything we can to, to get, you know, meet in our service product that we, we strive for, but it's, it will be a little bit challenging this year. Uh, we're looking to, um, undergo a revised contract with Timberline to help out on some of the trash pickups on the trash cans. Cause we kind of share that responsibility in the summer, just to kind of, as a cost savings measure, but we're gonna.
Let's suspect we'll be busy in that one, so we'll have a lot of trash too.
Yeah.
I think I know, yes, but why can't we fill these positions? Is it housing?
You know, I think it's.
I don't, it's Jeffrey, it's more than just all, I mean, everybody is struggling. And there are, I think there are more job opportunities that people here have more options to look at. There's less maybe people available, but every, this is not just a Summit County issue. It's a, it's an issue in a, in a lot of places and I mean, you'll squeak through, right? Eric and Dick, you're in restaurants, you're gonna squeak through, but you know, you probably would like to hire a few more people and I think we're gonna be, we're not immune to that. We're gonna, but our best asset right now is housing. That's the best thing we have to, like, when we, we're gonna bring, you know, when we go to the winter bus schedule and we try to go back to twenty-seven full-time drivers, the best thing we have is housing to offer. That will beat out every other employer out there is if we can offer them housing, you know, that, that's why we're keeping some of those units that we, the buy down stuff, but.
How much do these jobs pay? Like what bracket are they in?
They are, don't quote me on this, but they're, I think they're twelve seventy-five to, the range goes all the way to eighteen, depending on experience, kind of a wide range on them. Um, typically these are, you know, high school aged individuals or, or, you know, college, first year college students, but we're just, we're not seeing the applications like we have in the past and, um, you know, we, we really didn't see it even. That trend already showed up this past winter. It was, we were just, again, not to be fortuitous on the winter, but we didn't have a big winter, so we've kind of left some of those positions where vacant.
It's not as easy as just flipping the switch, but our goal, our goal will be that we're not gonna have a job that pays less than fifteen dollars an hour.
Yeah, good. That's great.
But we're just, you know, there's so many things to look at. We just can't flip that switch and say, but we know that, uh, you know, I think that's gonna happen around this county, that that's gonna be the new minimum.
On mainstream, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah. Restaurant industry, it's already seventeen bucks a starting wage.
And if we're talking that housing is the issue, that's, that's not gonna be high school kids, right? So are the same amount of, is there a trend with high school kids? Like, are they still doing summer jobs? Like, are they still?
All these kids come back.
There's a couple of kids walking around, but not many. It's not like it used to be.
Like it used to be where.
I think Frisco was, Frisco's paid their, uh, people to work on at their, their Marina Dock fifteen seventy-five, you know? And then Dylan couldn't hire anybody.
I haven't heard of any high school kids lucky enough that's.
Well, I, I just, I mean, anecdotally, I've noticed that it's different than when I was growing up. Yeah. And so if we have jobs that are essentially meant for high school kids. And that's not the trend anymore. It's tough. Yeah.
They already have jobs.
Yeah.
Often multiple.
Yep.
Yeah.
But we won't. So thirteen fifty and fourteen fifty are, are new starting.
Okay.
That we talked as early as yesterday about that we will be going to the fifteen at some point here.
Yeah.
Maybe not this season, but.
Yeah, I think that's a good goal.
I mean, I think it's necessary.
Yeah.
I think Wendy's starting is seventeen thirty-five or something like that. So there's no, that is just the reality of the county right now.
But I just want you to have a heads up, but we'll see. I mean, I, we're looking for solutions. We just don't wanna say, you know, we gotta keep trying something different and looking at what we can do to try to attract people in on these things, knowing that we won't probably get to full staff, but.
Just, you know, whatever you need to cut. I, I think what would be good for us is if you could sort of pass a list on to, on to Rick as you're going through this and saying, look, these are the things that we're gonna have to cut out. The noxious weeds, because as people come to us and say,
Yeah.
why aren't you doing this? We can say, we don't have the staff to do that this year. That's why. I think that's.
But it'd be good to have a heads up.
Okay.
Just to have a heads up, because it's easy to, it's easy to head off those, you know, the, the angry mob when you have, when we have accurate information.
You know, it's unfortunate. We, we'd hoped to contract with the county for some noxious weed because they've extended that, that, um, offer in the past, but they're short as well. Keep in mind for noxious weed, there's, there's a compliance and a requirement of the state to, to manage these weeds that are in that, you know, identified in, as part of that program. So right now, um, Hook is one of our main individuals for that, but he's tasked with other areas right now that are, you know, in priority higher. So we'll, we'll come back and be able to spray some of those areas that we've been, you know, kind of keeping track of the nasties, but weeds that is. But, yeah, we probably won't be able to spray all McCain like we have in the past and which is really, it's not an easy thing to, to sit here and say, but we'll, we'll fit and figure out a way to, what we can, so.
Thanks, James.
Thanks, everyone.
Little weed thing on the back of all the PD cars. And when they stopped, they just.
Ellie goes out and weeds open space.
How about she gets a job with James?
You know, I think, um, James does his tested. I don't think she could pass.
I have just one other thing and I'd be done with my.
Oh, let's do it. Do a couple of other things and then we can shorten the night.
We, uh, so we're buying a table for the Gold Fest fundraiser for Breck Music, the town. So ten, ten people, so that it's really for you. It's a fundraiser that will be at the, uh, Gold, uh, Country Boy Mine on Friday, July sixteenth. Friday, July sixteen.
July sixteen.
It's their big annual fundraiser that Breck Music does, so, um, you know, I talked with Dick and who's obviously on that, uh, committee with Kelly and that and thought it was an important way to support that.
We're encouraging those guys to get there.
And I think it's a way for some of you to get back out there too that haven't been seen and mixed. So I need to know. I mean, we've always, if it's you and a significant other, but it could hold ten, so we need to know who's interested in wanting to attend.
Right now, like this minute?
No, you could tell me and, uh, I'll have Peyton follow up with you, but we, I'd like to lock it in next week, okay?
I probably wouldn't be, have a plus one, but I'd.
What is that date again?
Sixteenth. Yeah, if it's just one, that leaves room for somebody else.
Take Aaron as a date.
In her dreams.
That's quoted the night right there. Uh, all right. You guys wanna do some stuff and then go till six and then take an hour?
Go through meetings.
All right, let's do, uh, report of, uh, mayor and council members. We had, uh, MMC and I went with Shannon, which was a treat.
Oh, that must've been a nice change.
That was great.
Yeah.
We talked about, uh, we, uh, we had a presentation from, uh, Pcalz Alliance, um, just talking about and, uh, that was good. And then we, we spent a lot of time talking about housing and about, um,
just what we're, we've been talking about, you know, pretty robustly. A couple of the towns are, a couple of the towns are ready to, would really like to just pull the trigger on a, on a cap. But the difference between us and them is, you know, we have with, with us in the county have about the same at thirty-eight hundred to four thousand. Dylan has a hundred and sixty. Frisco has two sixty, so, or Silverthorne has two sixty. I think it was Silverthorne has two sixty. So you know, we're sort of talking about different, a different scale of the problem and I told, I told them I support them doing that. I think they should head off their problem today instead of.
While you can.
While you can. Um, I did mention what we're talking about and I did sort of encourage some of them when we were talking afterwards. Um, that it would be great if we do adopt a program fee structure that all of us potentially share something similar, so. We'll see there without, it was a great discussion though. Everybody had some little anecdotal story about something. Was it Ryan or Hunter that was talking about, there's a, there's a bed and breakfast and a four-rent house that are right next to each other. Maybe it was Ryan Highland talking about, right next to each other. The bed and breakfast is at such a disadvantage because they pay commercial property tax and the, the rental right next to them that accommodates about the same amount of people, can charge less and is filled all the time. And it just, it's sort of the story of you know, what we've been talking about in that aspect of housing, so.
That's at a state level.
Yeah, that's nothing we can talk about, but when we do talk about some kind of program fee at some point or project fee, whatever we're gonna call it, I think it's important when we get pushed back to, you know, sort of let people know, look, that there's a huge difference between, I think, what we're gonna end up maybe discussing for a fee and what that tax would potentially be if you were a commercial operation that you are running in a residential neighborhood. And then that is something that somehow gets lost in our discussions. That that is a really big part of it. And it's, it's a four-time multiplier between residential and commercial rate. So it's a big deal.
Yeah, I think it means everything. Like, I think that is the discussion. When we talk about free market, when we hear free market and we hear property rights and all of those things, it's, that's just not true. If this isn't a free market right now, it's, it's very much tilted in the favor of short-term rentals when you compare it to a business.
So it was a great discussion. Everybody is, I sat next to Toby Favage, which was great. We needled each other the whole time, but that room was a different, there is a different feeling coming out of that room than some of the other meetings that we've been in. Every one of the municipalities feels that this is a crisis, that this is a crisis that needs to be handled immediately and we ought to do something and it, so it was a great discussion. So that was that. Is there anything else, Shannon? Uh, open space.
Oh, um. We haven't had a meeting per se. I do want, I do want to tell everyone that there is an annual open space and trails open house on Monday, June fourteenth, that's next Monday, at the Rec Center. Everyone should come. It's at five thirty. Scott, can I mention the consultant? So we've decided on a consultant. We're going with DTJ. Ann and Scott followed up with DTJ with some follow-up questions about conservation and how who exactly we'll be working with, and it's a great partnership with DTJ and this company called ERO who will look specifically at land conservation and there's a I think it's called Civic Brand, right? That's a civic brand that does deal specifically with the community. And then there's another entity that looks at financing, that's not to be confused that we, we wanna monetize, but really how to look at budgeting and the economy of open space and trails. So the DTJ will be hired to facilitate the new open space and trails plans.
And they'll take into, they'll kind of factor in all the various groups that you guys.
Yes, yes.
Breakout groups, I guess.
Working with the people who were on the phone, which is, it's not gonna be a bait and switch or anything like that. Um, Scott, anything else that I'm missing?
That's great.
Yeah, I, I think so too, and I think it's, it's great that, you know, everybody has their, their specialties in this, in this whole project, which I think will bring a lot to the table.
Excellent. Thank you, Erin. Dennis, tourism and heritage?
Uh, Lucy is gonna update us tonight on BTO and BHA. Really no updates from last meeting, but we do have a board meeting tomorrow afternoon at four o'clock.
Great. Uh, creative arts?
Uh, no meeting since our last meeting.
Events?
It was all in the memo and we'll be in person next meeting.
Uh, childcare is in San Diego. Uh, housing, anything to add?
No, that was, uh, those guys did a good reading. It was a good meeting. What's that?
Really in-person meeting, it was at ten o'clock.
I saw your scooter outside.
Yeah.
I thought something was going on.
I thought it was, I thought it was Zoom at ten thirty. It was in person at ten. I think that's why Nicole is leaving.
Can't handle it.
Yeah, she's sick of me.
Uh, social equity.
We did not have a meeting. Our next meeting's in two weeks. I think it will be virtual, so anyone can join easily. Oh, okay. Oh, I didn't realize that. That's great.
What's that date?
Maybe remind the commissioners.
And where is it going to be? Wait, will it be here? In this room?
I think it's not. When we're posting these, we gotta be clear about, cause there was a, I mean, they were kind of, Dick was confused today too and Jeffrey about, you know, we show it as optional, virtual, and it looks like, well, it's still a virtual meeting.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Well, in this one, yeah, for this, the Social Equity Commission invite, it says it says Zoom on it still, so.
And so that's your calendar.
Yeah, the calendar.
So as soon as we get it, the Zoom invites go out, then I'll change.
Okay, great, perfect.
Carol, I had figured out. We knew what was going on. Uh, any other matters you wanna talk about?
I have a question.
Sure.
With the Rec Center, is there, is there a plan to go back to Sundays? Late in asking that question.
So we, we are technically on our, our typical summer schedule calendar as of Monday of this week, so that means Sundays thirteenth, it'll be, rest of the summer will be on that, so we're on regular schedule starting now.
Great, thank you. Also, I've had feedback that people really like the, uh, the spray bottle and the wipe situation.
We're keeping those.
Really? Yeah, it's great. And it's, yeah, you know.
Since you've been doing those. Just kind of scrub yourself down.
Any other matters?
Thank you.
Put the thing back in the clean pile.
Uh, okay, that's, uh, we're gonna break the work session and return at seven o'clock for the night meeting.
Now I need to remember who asked me.
Hopefully they're listening and they got their answer. Were, are we eating in the, uh? In the other place?
Yes.
I'm breaking in the new gavel tonight.
Nice.
Oh, you got a new one. Nice.
Last gavel.
Kentucky.
They are known for their gavels.
Yeah, it's big gavel country.
Oak from a bourbon barrel. Exactly what I was thinking when I heard Kentucky.
All the order, the town council regular meeting for June eighth, twenty twenty-one at seven P. M. Roll call, please, Helen.
Here, Mr. Carlton.
Here.
Mr. Bergeron.
Here.
Ms. Owens. Mr. Coon.
Here.
Ms. Giallo. Mayor Mamula.
Here. Uh, we have town council minutes for May eighteenth and May twenty-fifth. Does anyone have any changes, corrections, additions? No? Council minutes stand as presented. Uh, agenda, Rick?
No changes.
All right. Move on to communications, the council. Uh, we begin with citizens comments. These are non-agenda items only. Three-minute time limit, please. If you have something to say, the podium right there, you can step up and, uh, say your piece. Anyone, anybody, uh, anybody?
Yeah.
All right. Citizen comment period is closed. We have an update from the BTO and Lucy.
Good evening, Mayor Mamula and council and Gary's hand down there. A couple, a couple of quick things for you. We just had our, um, we just, uh, we got our audit back for twenty twenty and we had another clean audit, which make you guys happy. And we also filed for PPP forgiveness thing today. So we should know in a couple of weeks if we, we should get a hundred percent of that back. So that's on the finance side. Um, we got a lodging report today. Um, it wasn't complete, but I can tell you that for May, um, our, we were at sixteen percent occupancy. So that's only two points down from two thousand nineteen. Uh, June so far, we're sitting at about twenty-five percent. Same time, um, in two thousand nineteen, we were at thirty-two percent. We think that gap is that Colorado Municipal League that was here in two thousand nineteen. Um, so.
How much of that is the additional units in there?
Um, a little bit of it is. And normally, we, normally, Dick, we would have the room nights as well. And I'm usually give it, I prefer to give it to you in room nights, but we don't have that yet. It just came in too late today, so we don't have the full report.
Closer than it sounds.
Yeah. I mean, I, for two points, I'd call that even. You know, for sure. Um, what's interesting, oh, then July fourth, um, our Sunday on July fourth is actually bigger than the Friday, which is kind of unusual. Good news. We can't really compare to two thousand nineteen because the fourth was on a Thursday. So it's, you know, apples and oranges. Um, but what we have been seeing, and I think we've been talking about it here, is we're seeing more and more of that midweek fill-in. Um, right now, we're watching Thursdays or pacing the same as Fridays. So people are really extending. And our midweek is, is actually pretty decent considering we don't have much group business. And, um, on a national level, um, there's a lot of talk about the trend because people are, you know, this pent-up travel demand and people have a little more money and they're going to travel well. Um, so we're really expecting a lot more like the old days, seven to ten, um, day stays. And the two to four long weekend things are not going to be happening as much. So I think we're going to certainly, we're seeing the early indicators of that in our lodging. And it's not just us, it's everybody. So it's, it's a good thing. It's a good thing for the properties, good thing for everybody. So that's, uh, looking forward. Um, this month, we are doing our Breck one oh one, which is our employee guest service training. And what this one is, I think Carol, you've been involved with this one. Um, it's for frontline employees and it's basically like fam trips. I mean, they get to go on a Jeep tour, raft trip. You know, find dinner in the Hearthstone, whatever it is. So our frontline employees learn about what we have. And they also are learning about dispersment strategies. So if Main Street's packed, they send them up, um, to Ridge or, you know, whatever. We're also building in a lot of information about FERC, Building Hope. Because we're very, we're having a lot of conversations in the BTO about what can we do to help kind of with the resiliency of our frontline employees because we're expecting to be really busy and what can we do to keep those folks propped up? So it's in their training along with responsible tourism initiatives. Then to just follow on your, um, events conversation from earlier, um, we did, Casey sent in as we were talking about it. All of the events we just got today from the rest of the county. And we will be doing a joint, um, marketing campaign. We're not really marketing the events, but information campaign. So Summit Daily News, stuff like that with the calendar for what everybody's got in the county at what time. So we're all going to share in that. Um, Frisco is actually building that one out. And, um, I do want to shout out, we're, we're really worried about, like you guys, we're really worried about, um, how busy we could be on the fourth. As hot as it's been in Denver, I mean, we, we, we could have way more people than we probably, um, can comfortably handle. And I just want to give a shout out to, um, Lynn Herford. I know she's here, but she's really been leaning in a lot and working with Casey and helping us, you know, figure out everything we can be doing to mitigate, you know, the cars and parking and all those sorts of things. Um, we'll say one word about Oktoberfest. It's early, but I want you to know it's on the radar screen. Uh, Casey went through her plan for that. Uh, we, we reviewed it this morning and I'm really, really excited about it, really pleased. It's a little too early to say, it will be very different, very scaled back, um, not on Main Street. Um, so we'll have people who are upset when they get here and we can't do thirty thousand people in three days. But it's going to be a really good program. And once we get it in front of BEC, um, and get that okay, I think, I think you all would really like the direction it's taking. So I was really happy today. Um, last thing I'll share is, um, next week, we're doing our annual meeting. It's going to be Thursday at eight thirty. We're going to keep it virtual because I've got a couple of board members that are not in town that are pretty key to this. Um, but we're going to make it like, if you remember last year, our first community update was actually our annual meeting. And it kind of launched the whole community update thing. So we've come full circle. We're going to do a very short annual meeting, just what we're required to do in the bylaws. Most of the meeting will be our summer preview. So Brett will do a piece on, here's everything that's on deck for marketing. And then Tessa will take everything that's on deck for the man at destination management side. And that's how we'll start presenting everything that the BTO does in those two chunks. Then, um, we'll bring Jake back from our RC and the, you know, main part of the meeting, half of the meeting is going to be Jake doing a little more in-depth, um, resident sentiment, uh, survey presentation. So it'll be a little deeper than what you saw here because we have a little bit more time here. So that is next week at eight thirty. So hopefully, um, you can join in or just join in for the first part because you've seen the second part. But, um, any questions or comments?
Zoom link for that then?
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's on the, um, download, but I'll ask Bill to make sure each of you, you know, and Eric, if you'd like a role in this, like I thought it might be nice if, if you want to do something like introduce Jake or say something about the resident sentiment survey, you're welcome to, you certainly.
You want me to? I will, but I don't need to.
Okay, we can talk about that.
Jake was great when he was here, by the way.
Yeah. And what we've done as a result of some of the questions you had, and we also took the advisory committee through it and questions that they had, um, we have now done a lot of cross tabs. So we've sliced and diced the key questions a lot of different ways, just so we'll be really prepared for when those questions come up in this meeting next week that will have the data right there and we can do that.
Did you say Oktoberfest isn't going to be on Main Street?
No. No, we, well, our concern, I mean, we've got to like do this stuff now, like order Steins and the beer from Germany and all that. And we just didn't think going back into that massive sea of humanity this summer was necessary. I mean, we'll see how Fourth of July goes, you know? Um, give me two weeks and I'll come back and tell you, I, I just, you know, it's, it's going to be very different. It'll be very scaled back, but I think it's going to be really cool.
Yeah, I'm sure it is.
Yeah. And it doesn't mean that, you know, next summer, we couldn't go back to the big version if we want to do that. We want to try something else. We have an opportunity. You know, it's a good thing with COVID. I mean, there are some good things. It's a clean slate. So if there's ever a time to try something different, we can try it. And if, if I'm the only one that thinks it's cool, we'll go back to what it was. So.
And I want to say, I think it's so great that you all are rolling in educational information on FERC and building hope into that workforce training. I had sat down with Tessa because I was curious about more the destination management side. And it's so great that you're thinking about providing and educating.
We're really concerned about keeping the employees we have because I mean, we can't like that, the Welcome Center's only open five days a week. We can't get staff either. So it's, it's key that we take care of these folks.
Hey Lucy, it came up in the Restaurant Association meeting. Um, is there any town-wide effort to recruit employees?
Um,
Happening?
Uh, we can do that. And, and you and I have talked about it before. I mean, we certainly can do that, but we want to make sure we have a place to put them, you know, place for them to go. So I'm, I'm comfortable. We could, we could generate demand. You know, and, and to your conversation earlier, I mean, they're out there. I think there's some, but they're on a national level. There's just a lot fewer people who want to work. Like what COVID has done is cause, you know, just huge swaths of the population to figure out, you know what? I don't need to work that hard or I can work from home or I don't need to work at all. And so I think our workforce has actually shrunk.
Seems that way.
Yeah. But I mean, we could, if we, to answer your question, Dick, we certainly could, but I'd want to be sure it wasn't a tease and we got a lot of interest and then.
Or no place for you to live.
So anything else?
Thank you, Lucy.
Right.
Great. All right. We have, uh, continued business. We have the second reading of Council Bill number thirteen, series two thousand twenty-one, an ordinance approving development agreement with Father Dyer United Methodist Church, Colorado nonprofit corporation at three ten Wellington Road. Chris?
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. Uh, we do have the second reading here tonight. It's for an addition, it's a development agreement to facilitate an addition of approximately twenty-four hundred and ninety-seven square feet to the nonhistoric portion, um, of the existing Father Dyer Church to handle um, an expansion of the food bank and other social services, uh, needs. We've been working really for about the last eighteen months, maybe even longer with, uh, Father Dyer. A lot of people have been involved, particularly, um, Jim Smitherton, um, who's the president of the church and Bobby Craig, who has been, has worked on some preliminary design. And, uh, Peter Grossich. Um, the only substantial change tonight is the additional language, um, added into the development agreement that requires density to be transferred, uh, to the site if it were ever to be, um, the use changed from a community facility.
Questions for staff? Yeah. Anyone in the public wish to comment on this application, second reading? Being none is their motion.
On second reading, I move you past Council Bill number thirteen, series twenty twenty-one, the title, which has been read into the record.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion by council?
I'd just like to, you know, it's exciting to see the facility expand and appreciate all the work that Father Dyer does and the community by hosting so many meetings and, and, uh, the food bank and everything else. It's, it's really important and appreciated.
Good work. Thanks, Dick. Anyone else? Roll call, please, Helen.
Giallo. Yes. Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
It's Sade. Yes, Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Uh, we have the first reading Council Bill number fourteen, series, Chris, thank you. Uh, first reading Council Bill number fourteen, series twenty twenty-one, an ordinance approving a long-term lease with Breckenridge Film, a Colorado nonprofit corporation, DBA, the Eclipse Theater, declaring an emergency, providing for an immediate effective date of this ordinance, part of one oh three South Harris Street.
Mayor and council, in front of you is a proposed ten-year lease, uh, broken down into one-year renewable terms. With the Breckenridge Film to lease what is currently known as the Speakeasy Theater, one oh three South Harris Street. They, uh, this will be a lease between the town and, uh, Breck Theater, although we will, the actual day-to-day operations will be managed by, uh, Breck Crate on behalf of the town for the operation. Uh, the tenant being Breck Film will occupy and have programming forty-eight weeks out of the year. A couple of those slower weeks will probably only be weekends. Some of the highlights, I know that was important to the council that we tried to increase the programming that goes in there. There'll be a mix of the different types of films that will be shown in there. There'll also be outreach, educational programs with kids. There'll be fundraising activities, et cetera. Um, the rent will cover, be covered by maintenance costs. I mean, they'll basically be re- uh, replacing the cost for, uh, you know, the annual maintenance on that building and the cleaning costs. And then there'll be a capital improvement fund that will be twenty-five percent of their net operational revenues. Uh, that will go towards improvements that are agreed upon at the building. So uh, we're looking at getting them in there. Uh, once we vacate that with them on July ninth, we'll be there. And, uh, Gary's here. We've been working with Gary, um, putting this together. Uh, we really appreciate considering this as an emergency ordinance. They, they need to have a signed lease to go get their liquor license and we want to be able to sign this lease tomorrow. So they can move forward and start making the arrangements to try to be operational by late summer, hopefully.
Questions for staff? Now, Gary, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah.
Please. Uh, we have some people on Zoom and they need to hear you and see you.
Uh, yeah, I understood. And first of all, let me apologize for not coming this afternoon. You think somebody that spent a lot of time in this room would remember that, um, gee, an ordinance like this would typically be discussed in work session. And think about it. So I'm here now. Um, I understood there were some concerns about the name and I, maybe if somebody can just articulate, other than, we don't like it. Because there's a story behind the name that we, um, have picked.
It's a missed opportunity to not include the Breck Film name.
We, um, all right, let me give you just, I'll try to do this in two minutes.
Please.
Citizens get three minutes, right? I, I'll do it in three minutes. The, um, the name currently with it, Speakeasy is, uh, owned by, by the former operator of the, uh, theater. We reached out, I think through Dennis Lucero after one of the subcommittee meetings. And, um, yeah, Dennis is here. And as I recall, and Dennis, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, the operator, the former operator, um, indicated that that name was part of a Sub S Corporation or something like that. And if we wanted to use the name, come talk to her, we can talk about purchasing the corporation, whatever the assets were, I don't know. We decided just not to get into that. And it's too bad because I think there is some value to that name, but it's not one that, uh, is, you know, something that's going to be readily available. Instead of then going and picking something out of the thin air and somebody immediately said blind moves, like, what? Why? You know, there's, there's nothing there. Um, I contacted Larissa O'Neil at the Heritage Alliance and said, you know, I asked her, what, you know, other than the Peak Eight Theater that used to be the old Quonset Hut? And then the old Village Theater, which, you know, collapsed a few years ago, but hadn't been used as, as a theater for years. Larissa went back and looked and yes, there was a, a theater along Main Street at various locations over the years, uh, called the Eclipse Theater in the nineteen twenties, starting in nineteen twenty, I believe. So it's historical kind of a reference. We kind of liked it. I, uh, talked to Robin Theobald. His grandfather actually was part owner and operator of the theater for years. So it just seemed to us that it was, was a nice link to the past, you know, and going with the clips. And, and given the fact that the Speakey was not going to be readily available to us. So that's my story.
And you're sticking to it.
Sticking to it.
Anything else to add about the lease or any?
You know, Rick, I may have misread something. I don't, real quick on a rant. If I can get this to wake up.
Should we call Terry Perkins into negotiate?
Twenty-two thousand a month, is it?
Yeah. We got the first part, twenty-four percent of all those actual costs. The janitorial, I may have misread this. Is this, this cost is, then it's summarized on the very last page of the lease. It's about another thousand, a little over a thousand dollars a month. That's not the amount that we would pay, uh, Breck Film would pay if we decided to go with the town's, uh, janitor.
If you went with the town, you would. If you went with your own and it was cheaper, you'd pay cheaper.
Okay, okay. I, uh, began to read this and I started thinking, maybe this is the expense for the maintenance of the common areas in the building, the hallways, the bathrooms and that stuff.
Now, the clean, well, I, yeah, the cleaning is included. The cleaning is for that facility and then the other cost of a common area.
So if we go with the town's, um, janitorial service, then the, the numbers in the back are pretty accurate.
Twenty-two hundred something a month.
That's good. I didn't misread. Thank you.
Gary. Uh, all right. Anyone in the public wish to comment? Did you have a question for Gary or?
No, this is, no, enough of Gary. This is an emergency ordinance, correct?
Yes, sir. Takes five, five affirmative votes.
Okay.
How do you guys want to handle the naming? Are you okay with it? I mean, we can find workarounds if we want to keep a part of it. If there's a desire to try to look at the speakeasy being in there.
He seems like they're really into it. So that's, you know.
But I, I forgot one little part to the story. So, uh, we found out there's another company out of Las Vegas called the Eclipse Theater who are evidently planning to expand nationally and are doing a big streaming, uh, national streaming platform. We, uh, sort of, to get ahead of the curve there, it'll be at the Eclipse Theater by, um, by Breck Film. I have to get you the, the exact wording, Rick. But we are going to use the Breck Film tagline in the overall name.
Cool.
That's good.
Yeah, well, there's the signage issue, so we have to talk about that.
All right.
Like a streaming service.
Oh.
Eclipse.
Eclipse.
EclipseTheaters.com.
Oh. Uh, anyone in the public wish to comment on this, uh, emergency ordinance? Dot com on this, right? Gary? Public hearing is closed. Is there motion, Jeff?
First reading, I move.
Emergency.
It's an emergency.
Just guys, yeah, first reading, we passed the emergency ordinance. But I say, on an emergency reading, we pass, uh, the first ordinance fourteen, series twenty twenty-one. You really screwed up my rhythm. Sorry, buddy. Okay. Twenty twenty-one, the title, which has been read into the record.
Second.
Motion in two seconds?
Because you felt sorry for me.
Is there any discussion?
I'm psyched.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, roll call, Helen?
It's Sade. Yes. Hello. Yes. Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes.
All right, Gary, thank you. Good luck. Jeffrey does not want too many artsy movies, he told me, just.
Like subtitles?
Oh.
Just make them slow so I can read them.
When will it open? What's first day?
We're going to get in, I guess now, a little after July ninth or right around July ninth. And we've got, you know, we're going to be operating a theater, which we haven't done before. There's going to be some soft opening opportunities and.
Council screening?
That and, you know, July, maybe in August, uh, you know, the film festival is ended September sixteenth through the nineteenth. So we'll have it available for that then. But we'll be doing some things prior to that, but really after the festival, we're going to really get going on.
Great.
Soft opening and then some movie programming before festivals and full guns. Bookers and soft openings and then some movie programming before festivals and pull guns after.
Right on.
Jeffrey Lyons has sent me his book. Yeah, 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 another one. You know, one, wrote one about the Red Sox. Cool.
Cool. You went a mile on a sign. All right, we have, uh, Council Bill number 15, series 2021, ordinance approving a lease with Summit County Youth Hockey, Inc.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. We have before you an ordinance approving a lease with Summit Youth Hockey. This is for the North multipurpose room within the Stevensy West Ice Arena. Um, this is a renewal of an existing lease that, um, lapsed in May of this year. And, um, the, going forward, this will be an annual renewal without having to come back through town council and make that approval if it is approved this evening. Um, this is, uh, essentially a relationship that we've had with Summit Youth Hockey for over 20 years and this is a really good dryland training space for them.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions for staff? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this ordinance? No, public hearing is closed, is there a motion?
On first reading, I move past Council Bill number 15, series 2021, the title, which has been read into the record.
Second. There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? A roll call, please, Helen.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Ms. Giello.
Yes.
Ms. Sade. Mayor Mamula.
Yes. All right, uh, we have no resolutions and for other, Tim. And they're planning or?
Do you want to do that after, do the planning here?
They're planning for us if you want. Okay, uh, planning commission decisions, last meeting, are there any calls this evening? Planning commission decision stand as presented and we have a town project hearing, the Block 11 Workforce Housing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a town project hearing for the Block 11 Net Zero Apartments Workforce Housing Project, PL 2021-0139. I'll keep this short. This is a proposal to construct three deed restricted workforce housing apartment buildings with 27 one-bedroom apartments totaling roughly 20,679 square feet. Uh, this is located on Lot 6B and a portion of Lot 7, Denison Plaza subdivision, pending a re-subdivision, which will create a lot of roughly 2.14 acres. The addresses are 2040 and 60 dredge drive. Along with the buildings are proposed 62 parking spaces, 27 of which are in one of five carports and then 35 additional surface spaces. And then, um, Helen, if you want to switch over to that next slide.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-three. The, uh, architecture is based on the Coto flats, the existing apartments there, which have been found to be very successful. The largest change surrounding the roof form, uh, these are proposed to be net zero energy, meaning the amount of energy produced is equal or greater than the amount of energy consumed over the course of the year. So obviously some very large, uh, solar panel arrays on both the roof of the three apartment buildings as well as those five carports. Uh, the buildings utilize a natural color palette, it's kind of a gray-green and a kind of a gray-brown. And we have, uh, Peter Weber with Coburn Partners and Lindsay Newman with Norris Design here, if you have any further questions.
Thank you. Uh, questions from council? No, anyone in the public wish to comment on this application for a town project for workforce housing? The public hearing is closed.
The 27 single, uh, one-bedroom, right? And it's 62 parking.
62 parking, right, Lou? Uh, is there a motion?
I'm not ready for this.
He's going to step in and fill.
Hang on, hang on, I can do it. I'm, okay, I move you past, shoot, I'm not ready.
Do you want me to jump in?
Just don't.
I make a motion to approve the Block 11 Net Zero Apartments Workforce Housing Project, PL 2021-0139, located 2040 and 60 dredge drive with a passing point analysis of positive 10 points along with the attached findings and conditions.
I'll second that. There is a motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, this is a good one. Roll call.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron. Ms. Giello.
Yes.
Ms. Sade. Yes, Mayor Mamula.
Yes.
Thank you to the design team and Lori, thank you for hard work on this one. Yeah, go, go build it. All right, Tim.
Okay, here it goes. This is a letter addressed to the mayor and council. After having been privileged to serve as the town attorney for the town for almost 34 years, I have decided that it is time for me to move on to the next phase of my life. My employment contract obligates me to give you at least six months prior notice of my retirement. This letter is my formal notice that I will retire as town attorney by the end of 2021. The actual date of my retirement will depend on how soon you were able to find the new town attorney and what I can do to help create a smooth transition from the old to the new. Serving as the town attorney has been the highlight of my professional career. I express my deepest gratitude to you and to the other mayors and council members that I have had the honor of serving. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
Tim, you will be missed and I can't imagine we'll be able to really replace you.
Anybody can be replaced.
Not anybody can be replaced.
Still try to replace Elway.
I like you a lot better than Elway, I guess. Anything else, any other, other, other matters this evening? No, all right. Use my new gavel. We're adjourned.